Good evening. The September 9th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris? She's here.
My mom is gonna kill me here.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns is here. Councilmember Saffertan? Councilmember Revel?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Harkaris?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Mayor Biss?
Here. We have our quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which I'm afraid there are many. But they're all nice. So first, I'd like to give a shout out to Terry Cornell, who's in the audience, if you would be willing to come forward for a moment. Actually, it would be just a, no, please, yeah. We just, a few days ago, celebrated Legacy Businesses in Evanston. Well, this coming Saturday, September 14th, Preston's Flowers, 1726 Central Street in the 7th Ward, will be celebrating their 75th anniversary. So Ms. Cornell is business manager and partner of Preston's, and I just wanted to just congratulate you, give you a chance to introduce yourself to the community, and to invite the community to join us. As I said, it's going to be on Saturday, this Saturday, the 14th, from 10 to 1:00, at the shop at 1726 Central, and we just look forward to congratulating you then as well. But go ahead, Ms. Cornell.
Thank you. We are so excited. What a privilege it is to be here and to share with you that Preston's is enjoying our 75th anniversary, and we couldn't be more excited. For 75 years, we've been a trusted source of not only beautiful flowers, but wonderful arrangements and heartfelt arrangements, and we wanted to thank you for letting everybody be a part of their lives, of their most cherished moments of their lives. And to express our gratitude, again, we're having this celebration on Saturday from 10 until 1:00, and we'll be having our make-your-own bouquets, and we're having snacks and kids' activities and raffles and lots and lots of other surprises. And all of this is going to take place on Central Street, 1726 Central Street, and whether you're a longtime customer or new to our floral family, we can't wait to share this milestone with you. So thanks again for your continued trust and support, and we're so proud to serve our Evanston community, and we sure hope you will all stop by. Each of you has a little announcement and a piece of candy up on your little snack. I've shared a few with the audience, so please be sure to come and stop by. It'll be a really great time. You'll see all kinds of announcements throughout the neighborhood and on our stores as well. So please stop by. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, and congratulations to Preston's. Yes. What a beautiful store, and I'd encourage everyone to please check out the Evanston Legacy Business Alliance website, where you'll see Preston's listed and many of our other very cherished businesses. So please check it out. We just launched the Evanston Legacy Business Alliance this week with a really beautiful celebration. So thank you, that's all.
Thanks very much. Next on my list, so I look forward to seeing many of you this coming Saturday at Preston's. I saw many of you this past Saturday on the lakefront at the Folk Festival, what I'm going to optimistically call the first annual Folk Festival that was put on by SPACE. It was just nice. It was just really, really nice. It was, you know, it was one of those like, huh, we do get to live here moments, you know, just this gorgeous setting. There were tons of people of every age, from Evanston and from far beyond, having a fabulous time. And, you know, I just think it was a really, really great weekend for the city where we showcased ourselves in kind of as wonderful a manner as possible. And I just have to tell you that in talking with the folks from SPACE, they could not say enough good things about how easy our city staff was to work with and making this happen. And talking to our city staff, they could not say enough good things about how easy SPACE was to work with to make this happen. And so I just, you know, I think as we think about what it takes to build the community we want, finding opportunities to enjoy nature and the arts and each other and community that allow us all to show ourselves our best sides and lift each other up is really what we want to do. So it was a delight, and I just want to thank everyone in this organization and in this community who made it happen. Next, to keep the good news coming, I want to say real congratulations to our team, especially our sustainability and resilience team. We got phenomenal news last week of the receipt of a $10.7 million Inflation Reduction Act from the Department of Energy to help us implement a healthy building ordinance that's going to be a critical part of electrifying buildings in the city of Evanston and a key part of compliance with our climate action and resilience plan. You know, we've been talking from up here for a while about how important expanding out our sustainability and resilience team was and how hiring two additional people to work with Kara Pratt was so important. This is what we were talking about. Ben Martin in particular on Kara's team was absolutely essential in making this grant possible and not only doing the application, but putting forth a representation of the city as a trusted partner for the federal government who could be counted on to use these funds wisely and implement it well. And so I'm just, I'm really, really excited about what this is going to enable us to do, and I think it's a really strong indication that we're on the right track in the way that we're committing to implement our sustainability priorities. So thanks, thanks very much to the team, and congratulations on this wonderful recognition and on the really great work that it's going to unlock moving forward. And finally, I have a proclamation. I hope that there's not any kind of conflict of interest for me to read this proclamation as a parent of an ETHS freshman, but I, but if there is, oh, well. So whereas Evanston Township High School has served as a cornerstone of education and community engagement at Evanston, Illinois since its founding in 1883, and whereas the Church and Dodge Campus, established in 1924, has been the home of ETHS for a century, providing an exceptional learning environment for generations of students; and whereas ETHS has continually upheld its mission to foster a diverse and inclusive educational community, equipping students with the skills and knowledge necessary to thrive in an ever-changing world; and whereas the Church and Dodge Campus has been a site of academic excellence, innovation, and community collaboration, serving as a hub for cultural, athletic, and artistic events; and whereas the school's faculty, staff, and administration have demonstrated unwavering commitment to the success and well-being of all students, fostering an environment of respect, integrity, and lifelong learning; and whereas the contributions of ETHS alumni, educators, and community partners have been instrumental in shaping the school's legacy and future; and whereas we celebrate this significant milestone, we recognize the profound impact ETHS has had on the lives of its students, the Evanston community, and beyond. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim September 14th, 2024, as Evanston Township High School's Church and Dodge Campus Day in the city of Evanston, and commend and celebrate the centennial anniversary and express our deepest gratitude to all who have contributed to the school's rich history and success, and look forward to a future of continued achievement and innovation. And to mark this proclamation, we actually have an exciting video to show, just a very, very brief video of another exciting thing that's happened at ETHS just very, very recently. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you so much. So if you ladies would come up, it has been my honor. I'm part of the committee for the centennial, and this is the ninth house that ETHS has built, the first one that will reside and that is residing in the 2nd Ward on McDaniel. Today was just phenomenal to see what students have put into place, and so it just coincided with us celebrating the centennial and doing the house. So I didn't know if you wanted to say anything, Denise?
Yeah. So thank you all for having me here today. My name is Denise Clark. I'm the director of student activities at the high school. It's my pleasure to stand before you guys as part of the committee for our centennial celebration. If you guys are all free this Saturday, there's a couple of things going on, but please stop by this Saturday between 1:00 and 4:00 as we celebrate our 100th year at Church and Dodge. This is like a full ETHS all-class reunion and a community event. You can come with your families. We'll have great music, we'll have good food, and celebrating 100 years at Church and Dodge. This event is a cultivating event, not just for our students, but for also our staff and our community. And being part of the ETHS class of 2005, I just really feel like this is going to be a great honor for us to come together and celebrate all the things that we do here in the Evanston community. So thank you all for your time. Hope to see you.
Thank you so much for all that you do, and congratulations to ETHS. That concludes my very lengthy public announcements. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Biss, members of the council, Clerk Mendoza. We have a very special recognition tonight, and thank you all for your patience over the past hour as we wrapped up our committee business. I'm very pleased to introduce Evanston Fire Division Chief Matt Smith and Field Chief Sean Malloy, who will discuss our lakefront operations and highlight several lifesaving incidents this past summer. I'd like to welcome our other fire department members, especially our heroic visitors who participated in these lakefront saves. Chief Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, city manager, Clerk Mendoza, members of the council. What we are doing here tonight is recognizing some heroic lifesaving events that happened along the lake. As city manager Stowe said, my name is Matt Smith. I'm responsible for Special Operations and all the training for the fire department personnel and the lifeguards. With me to my right is Field Chief Sean Malloy, is also responsible for the field operations and training of Special Operations lifeguard, and Deputy Chief Bill Munro. Us, along with Parks and Recreation leadership, Michael Callahan, Tim Carter, and Katie Grundon that are here tonight, we form your lakefront team that's responsible for the recreational opportunities as Parks and Rec and public safety from us. As we all know, Lake Michigan presents amazing recreational opportunities. However, it is also an extremely dangerous body of water. We are faced with a number of deaths every year. This year in 2024, Lake Michigan has claimed 44 lives. Unfortunately, one of these was off the shore of Evanston, and another one launched a vessel from the shore of Evanston this summer. Public safety along the lakefront takes several things to all come together. First, the funding. The dedication of the budget team and the council to approve the funding necessary for the equipment, the training, and the personnel cannot be overstated. Second, the dedicated heroic members of the Evanston Fire Department, Parks and Recreation, Evanston Police Department, lifeguards, and also sometimes heroic, selfless acts of citizens. We are here tonight to briefly recognize these heroic people that collectively saved 10 lives over the course of the summer off the shore of Evanston. This recognition, as brief as it is, is in no way intended to diminish the countless acts of bravery by our men and women along the lakefront every single day that intervened and stopped a chain of events before it led to heroic lifesaving or unfortunately death. Because of the nature of our business and obligations to school, after-school activities, jobs, not everyone involved in these incidents is able to be here tonight. Hopefully, some of them are joining online, but they'll definitely with us in spirit. Those that were able to make it, when I call your name, please raise your hand, allow the acknowledgements, and stick around afterwards for a picture up at the dais. The first incident involves a citizen heroic rescuer, Joe Flanagan. On Sunday, June 30th, he fearlessly jumped in and saved three people that were trapped along the break wall at Lighthouse Beach. Tragically, another on that fateful day was not able to be rescued. If not for Mr. Flanagan's heroism, three more people likely would have succumbed to Lake Michigan on that day. Thank you. Earlier in this summer, on June 10th, Lucas Macy, Max Smith, and Mason Ferran teamed up with EFD Lake lifeguard coordinator Maggie Fanning to save a young man trapped along the Dog Beach break wall. Lucas was able to brave the torturous waves that pinned this victim into the break wall and reach him and bring him to shore, where paramedics and other lifeguards were able to provide the needed EMS care. On June 18th, Susanna Vlodek, Rachel Severt, and Max Tofen. That team of lifeguards on that day noticed a man clinging to a swimming buoy, not responding appropriately. When the lifeguards reached him, complaining of arm pain and acting inappropriately, rescued him out of the water. Immediately upon getting onto the sand, just demonstrated seizure activity. If that chain of events were not as effective, having a seizure in our waters could have proved deadly. On June 29th, Bridget Inzitari, Sam Grasik, Sam Clark, and Nico combined to save two youths that were struggling to keep their head above water and were in significant distress. On August 8th, Tacey Jamison, Emiliano, Leo Verilli, Eleanor Feeny, and Kathleen Carrasco saved a child actively drowning in the deeper part of the Lee Street Beach Swimming Area. As recently as August 25th, Evanston Fire Department water rescuers were summoned to save a life approximately one-half mile off the shore. Shift Chief Tim Maigon, Captain Ryan Roder, and water rescuers Brandon Bass, TJ Sigman, Niels Olsen, and Ned McAlfrish, along with many other EFD personnel, saved a person that day intent on committing suicide in our lake. As a special opportunity tonight, a survivor and her family from a July 27th rescue is here tonight to personally thank the lifeguards and other personnel that heroically saved her that fateful day. The lifeguard team of Sam Clark, Sarah Ski, Anna Frederick, Alan Ikobovitch, and Timic Vlodek, along with lifeguard coordinator Maggie Fanning teamed up to make this historic rescue. As Sam Clark, the lifeguard that was standing watch in the chair, noticed her floating as a, what we call, a passive drowning victim in the Clark Street Beach Swimming Area, he immediately jumped to action. When he reached her, rescued her appropriately to the beach, met with other lifeguards, along with the beach manager and the supervisor that was on the way, noticed she was lifeless, apneic, and pulseless on the beach. Immediately, the training and equipment kicked in by performing CPR and attaching an AED that was at that beach that day, as every day. Continued CPR until EFD paramedics assumed care and transported to the Evanston Emergency Room after regaining a pulse, spontaneous respirations, and a life was saved. Without these lifeguards' recognition of the dangers, quick action, she surely would have drowned. These handful of incidents highlight what appropriate funding, training, and heroic dedication by citizens and rescue personnel can achieve along our lake to make our recreational opportunities as safe as possible for our public. Thank you all, and please come on up for a picture.
And I just wanted to offer an opportunity for the mayor or council members to share any comments.
Councilmember Harris?
So I'm sorry they've left the room, but when I first got on council, we had a problem with our beachfront and our lifeguards. And if my mom was gonna kill me for eating, she's gonna kill me. We've done a hell of a turnaround, and I am very proud. Water, most people don't understand that water is the most deadly element that we have, natural element. And for our fire, for our young children, not children, they're almost adults, to be out there making these life calls and really putting their lives at risk because you don't have enough time to think about it. You've got to act. So I am just so proud of our fire department. I appreciate you all. I appreciate our youth who are lifesavers and lifeguards. That's no easy task. So I just wanted to say thank you all so much.
Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. I just want to echo Councilmember Harris, one, about the turnaround on our lakefront, but two, just the amount of training it takes. I think, you know, one, I don't know, Mr. Flanagan, what your background was, if maybe you had lifeguard training, but it's important also to know that it is extremely dangerous to try to save someone who is drowning. I learned the hard way and almost drowned, and you can drown yourself saving someone, trying to save someone who's drowning. And so I think it's really important for folks to remember to, if you don't have the training, you know, call for help from someone who does. I think we've, thanks to Councilmember Nguyen, I think Revel and our city manager and others have now placed life preservers along the lakefront. So, you know, whenever I'm at the lakefront, the first thing I do when I see someone swimming is like, look where the life preserver is. Make sure that you're utilizing that equipment and utilizing our lifeguard staff because we don't want to have one tragedy become a much larger tragedy. So thank you for those folks who have put their own lives on the line to save folks. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will add my congratulations as well. As someone who, back in the day, was a lifeguard myself at a pool, the most I had to do was whistle and tell somebody to walk because they might bump their head if they fell. I never had to rescue anybody. So all the respect in the world to our highly-trained staff, both on the lakefront, in the fire department, and here in the civic center, who, you know, set the stage for, you know, this really wonderful operation to happen. I also want to add to the general public, we need to respect the flags. Red flag is there for a reason, and it might look like the water is safe, but if the red flag is there, please don't go in the water, or you might be one of these unfortunate casualties. Thank you.
I just want to echo those comments. I mean, first of all, thank you. Thank you. It's a really, it's been shocking this summer, I'll just say. It's been shocking to learn about how many of these incidents occurred. Really, the heroism that you all demonstrated was the difference between a, you know, beautiful summer in Evanston and an unbelievably tragic summer. And so I know the work is hard. I know it requires a lot of training. Frankly, Councilmember Reed is exactly right about the risk that you put yourselves through to perform these saves, and I just want to say thank you so much. And I just, I want to also echo the comments to the community. Before I took this job, my experience of the lake was a place that I enjoyed being and sometimes didn't enjoy being told how to enjoy it, sometimes couldn't figure out why there were all these rules. And what unfortunately we've learned sometimes in tragic ways is those rules are there for excellent reason. And so to the community, this is not a joke, it is not a laughing matter, it is not arbitrary. Please follow the rules, follow the directives from these excellent trained professionals who are giving you the instructions they're giving you because of what they know to be important for your own safety. You know, ultimately, the most fundamental, profound reason why we have a government is to keep people safe and secure, and you guys have done an extraordinary job of that. We are so grateful. Thank you very much.
Just thank you again, Chief Smith, Chief Munro, Chief Malloy so much, and I also want a special call, special recognition, Director Thompson and our lakefront manager, Tim Carter, who have worked so hard over the last few years to completely transform our lakefront operations into the professional organization that it is. Thank you so much.
I know what you're thinking. What you're thinking is, surely the mayor's announcements can't be totally over. Good point. Before we move on to the rest of the agenda, I would like to take the opportunity to actually present our ETHS friends with their proclamation.
Good evening, all women. I am actually here as legal counsel for Kennedy Constructing Corporation. Also with me, who've signed up actually to make some comments, are a couple of individuals and my client, Ryan Kennedy, is behind me. The reason why I'm before you is because we were before the Committee on Public Works a little while ago. I'm not going to repeat everything that I said there, but now this is in front of the city council on a motion recommending approval of a contract for lead pipe replacement. At the committee meeting, we pointed out, and some of those who are here recognized that there were some confusing, incorrect, not clear responses with respect to questions that were asked about the bid package, information that was in the bid package. And our client, Kennedy Constructing, was the lowest bidder at $1.1 million for this lead pipe replacement program. The state of Illinois is giving the city of Evanston $1 million towards this project, and the city of Evanston has to pay out of its own pocket the remainder. The reason why we appeared before the committee is to point out that there were material, factual, and legal issues that warranted that this particular matter be tabled, at the very least, at the very least, to examine the facts, to examine the law, and to contact or write to the DCO and specifically ask them the following question. We received a lowest bid of $1.1 million. We are inclined to give the bid to the second-highest bidder, which is about $200,000 more than the lowest bid. And we, City of Evanston, respectfully request you, DCO, if, will you still grant us the $1 million to do this lead pipe replacement program under these facts and circumstances if we accept the lowest bid at $1.1 million? With all due respect to everybody, we did not get a direct answer to that question, and it's a very simple and direct one. And all that we're asking for the council to do this evening is, when it gets this package, to make a motion to table it for two weeks. Ask staff, ask legal counsel, to write to DCO, provide all of the facts and the law on this point, and simply ask the question, can we, City of Evanston, award this contract to the lowest bidder at $1.1 million and still get the $1 million grant? Which means the city of Evanston will only have to pay $100,000 and not an additional $200,000 for this project. That's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mark Baer, who will be followed by Eric Passit, and then Martin Mercer.
Mayor, did you want everybody on this matter to address at one time, or?
We'll just go in the order that people signed up in.
That's fine.
Although, nine months ago, the Equity and Empowerment Commission went out of its purview outside of its reason for existence, planning to vote on a resolution over the Israel-Hamas war. Not only did they go out of their purview, but the resolution called Israel an apartheid state and made no mention of 1,200 innocent lives slaughtered by Hamas, 1,200 innocents whose life apparently had no relevance whatsoever, whose lives were apparently meaningless. These actions caused much anger and hurt in the Israeli and Jewish community in Evanston, evident at the commission meeting, which I attended that night. The city council can consider such a resolution and chose not to. The commission has no such right. And yet, there have been no repercussions. No one removed from the commission by the mayor, no discussion from the city council about what to do about these divisive and hurtful actions by the commission. And yet Evanston is about 20% Jewish, making us, I believe, the largest minority in this city, and it is estimated that 60% to 90% of Jews in America support the state of Israel as our Jewish homeland, have friends and family there, and yet no consideration of decency was shown towards our community by the Equity Empowerment Commission. So why no repercussions? Why this shameful behavior by our city? Why no reaching out by the commission to the two hostages released after 57 days who are Evanston citizens, to the Evanston grandmother of one killed last week by Hamas? Well, here's my own repercussions. Mayor Bis, I will not support you again. You have failed a large part of this community, and I hope many others follow my lead. Number two, I want the council member on the commission to know, the one who couldn't be present that night, but according to the Daily Northwestern, called in and urged the council leader to vote anyways despite the legal counsel's decision that night, to know that he can hate Israel all he wants, that Israel isn't going anywhere and will be here for generations to come. Lastly, three, as it's clear to me that the city council isn't going to do anything about the EEC, I would ask that the wording of the purpose be changed to the following. Purpose: The goal is to ensure that all residents receive equal service and treatment regardless of race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, except for those who are Israeli or those who have visited the apartheid state, predominantly Jews, especially those who suffered harm from murderous terrorists. Shame on the city leaders in this chamber.
Mr. Mayor, can I, I wasn't named specifically, but for someone to say that I hate Israel and like...
At the end of public comment, I'll call on you. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eric Passit, who will be followed by Martin Mercer, and then Ray Friedman.
I'm Eric Passit. I'm a citizen of the Fourth Ward and also the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos. And I'm here on kind of the other side of the Main Street construction. My office is right in the middle of it, and I found it, I think this is the third year we've gone through major construction in that area. And if you were a small business in that area, restaurant, retail store, you'd be disgusted with what happened there. And I'm affected by very little of it, except for just seeing that, you know, Lucky Plate are closed for a week during all of this. They said, you know, I'm quoting everything that I'm seeing in the paper and also witnessing it, you know, you went to a restaurant there, normally you'd see a principale full of people on a normal night. Nobody was there on the outside. People were eating inside. I talked to Tetrario DOC, they said their business was down quite a bit. You know, they're saying here, at least 20%. Now, I also saw an article yesterday that our vacancies still in downtown Evanston for small businesses are at least 20%. I don't see any action being done by the city to change this at all. And now we're proposing another project, I think that's being voted on tonight, to increase bike lanes or for buses, $3 million. This is only going to close that whole area again. I mean, if you would have saw the, I mean, the last two weeks in the Main Street area, you couldn't even drive down the street. How would you like if you were a small business there? Was any help offered to them financially? I doubt it. Probably zero. I mean, it's, I mean, we can gloat that we're going to have this nice funding in October to help it out. Far too late for some businesses. I mean, how many more vacancies do we have to suffer for us to change? Do we really need more bike lanes in Evanston at the expense of more businesses going out of business? I doubt it. So I'm just, I'm personally embarrassed by that, and I hope, you know, some other people are also. And I hope you, you know, for your next, if you get re-elected, Mayor Bis, that you seek out to help small businesses, because I just don't see it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Martin Mercer, who will be followed by Ray Friedman, and then Ryan Kennedy.
Hello, Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you so much for being here tonight and doing what you do, hard work and very difficult topics at times, but we have a beautiful city here, a nice small town. I've been a resident of Evanston for 30 years. My daughter matriculated K through 12, right here. Evanston's a beautifully diverse, vibrant community. I can't imagine it being any other way. I myself was homeless for eight months in 2018. I understand the difficulties, immediate and also kind of branching out. We have, across the country and here in Evanston, Chicago, whatever, pick a place, big challenges with homelessness, mental illness. All that being said, what are the answers? I don't have them, and apparently not too many people do, because it's a very difficult, challenging situation, particularly for these folks that are in these situations themselves, living it day to day. However, we are all capable and courteous and neighborly, particularly in a warm and welcome community. I love Fountain Square. I see it as the heart of the city. I'm semi-retired, so I get some time to goof around down there, take my Kindle, whatever, hang out. I have a chess club that I run on Thursday nights, Thursday afternoons, at the main branch of the library. So every Thursday, I walk through, another time that I'm in Fountain Square, to go check out the summer festival there that happens every Thursday. In May and June, it was great how many people were enjoying Fountain Square. Children, parents, any old regular joker like me. However, beginning somewhere around the end of June through today, the amount of people that I see enjoying Fountain Square has dwindled precipitously. And I think this is because of certain people that are there, and well, they should be, who unfortunately are not quite as courteous and neighborly as you could hope. Thursday, April 29th, this past Thursday, 5:45, if I may approach, I'd like to share these with you. This is what I found. As you go through, you will see, at the beginning, it's rather innocuous. Some of the stuff that drink on the table, big deal. But as you go through these pictures, you will see that this amount of garbage that is left there, and ironically, trash bags left there as well. You would think maybe we cleaned up after ourselves. A broken rum bottle, right there in Fountain Square. A pile of vomit, very near where, hopefully, tonight, there'll be some information about resolving the fountains there. A broader view with vomit, and then unfortunately, the last image is feces on the bench. I just wanted to bring this to your attention. I don't know what the answers are. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman, who will be followed by Ryan Kennedy, and then Antonio Joyner.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you had a good summer. I missed last council meeting, where I wanted to talk again about general obligation bonds and why we're using them as much as we are. I see three items, SP1, 2, and 3, for special orders of business tonight. I really wish that we can all hear your discussion on all three of these items before public comment, so we can comment on whatever your discussion is on Fountain Square and Vision 2045 and presentation on the financials for next year. So I don't, I don't understand why we haven't had any discussion on next year's finances. We wait till the end of the year. Are we planning on increasing the budget by another $50 million? When do the residents get involved with that discussion on the budget? And I don't understand why we don't have a discussion on general obligation bonds, where they're going and how they're getting paid back. I know how they're getting paid back from taxes. What is the plan for 909 Davis? I've asked this question at board meetings, and I don't have an answer. Is, you know, are we moving forward, moving into 909 Davis? Are we moving out of City Hall here? Are we, what's the plan? And when does the public get involved with that discussion? The discussion and the process has always been lacking. I don't understand it. You had always, Mayor Bis, you talked about transparency and accountability from the time you were elected. And so when are we discussing the budget and City Hall and 909 Davis? You're going to discuss now Fountain Square. I would love to know if the $800,000 is going to repair that we settled the lawsuit for, if that's going to repair Fountain Square, or just, we just wasted $7 million? So I think, you know, the discussion for finances, we need to know where our money is going, and raising the budget by $50 million a year for the past three years, from 300, almost 300 million, to now 450 million is a little bit, a little bit too much money. So thank you for listening, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ryan Kennedy, who will be followed by Antonio Joyner, and then Lazarus Southall.
Hello. My name is Ryan Kennedy. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Mayor Bis, you may remember this, maybe not. A couple of years ago, you actually talked regarding a proposal I had to purchase the old recycling center, using Evanston residents and paying for it by replacing lead pipes in the city. Unfortunately, it didn't work out. I know you guys are using it, but I appreciated the time you took to talk about that. I'm here today because our company, Joel Kine Constructing, was the low bidder on the lead service replacement project that's being proposed to be awarded today to the second low bidder. Our bid was about $200,000 lower than the second bidder, and unfortunately, though, we were not able to meet the MBW requirements of the project. We believed, and still believe, that the spec contained a provision in which you could submit your good faith efforts and document those good faith efforts, explain exactly what you did, how you did it, who all you reached out to, send that into the city, and then be granted a good faith waiver, even though you didn't make the whole 28%. We were able to locate MB and WB companies, unfortunately not the full 28%, and as an additional show of good faith, we proposed to include the city of Evanston's LEP compliance program, so the local employment program. This contract did not have a LEP component. However, we said we would use Evanston residents for 50% of the contract hours, again, as a show of good faith, in a way to prove that we really were trying to do our best on this job. Unfortunately, it doesn't sound like good faith waivers were ever considered, despite what I thought was a pretty comprehensive spec. State statute, there was 30 pages in the bid document about how to submit your good faith efforts, how to document them. There were addendum questions that, in my mind, were not very clear, sort of insinuated that they wouldn't take waiver requests, but then told you how to put them together. We clearly, I thought, made a good faith effort, and if the city was accepting those efforts, I think it would have been accepted. And in this case, the city would have saved a lot of money. You know, at this point in time, it doesn't seem like the city is willing to accept those good faith efforts, and that's unfortunate again, because our bid was the lowest, it saved the city almost $200,000, and would have put Evanston residents to work on this job. And I do think, though, there's a way that this could be made right, and it's simply by rejecting the bids on the project and rebidding it, this time with a clear spec that tells you exactly what you need to do to comply, how to comply, tells you what the city won't accept, and really puts all bidders on an even playing field. It will save money, hundreds of thousands of dollars. It will get the job done in the exact same period of time. There's plenty of time on this contract to do the work, and it'll put Evanston residents to work, and I think that's pretty important to the city. So I appreciate your time. I'm going to stick around for any questions on the job, but thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Antonio Joyner, who will be followed by Lazarus Southall, and then Denise Clark.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Antonio Joyner. I'm a resident of Evanston for 27 years. 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 I'm a resident of Evanston for 27 years.
I'm a resident of Evanston for 27 years and homeowner. My kids went to Evanston, my wife went to Evanston, and I'm here to support Joe Kennedy and the work that they're doing and the opportunities that they give to people like me, men, women, you know, to learn new things, to help our community, and to lift us up, you know, by taking out the lead pipes and keeping us healthy and, you know, having people go to work. So I'm here to simply say that we need people like this, a company like this, to have in our community, doing good things for our community and helping our community, like people like me, keeping us working, keeping us motivated, learning new things, and, you know, just being there for the people. You know, without them, we wouldn't be healthy, we wouldn't know what to do, and we wouldn't really know who to look for to get these jobs done. This company has supported me and my family, and I support them 100%. And, you know, I would just hope you guys can support them too, and the good things that they're doing for our community and using our community to get things done. So that's basically all I have to say, and please help them out and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Lazarus Southall, who will be followed by John Quail, and then Amy Heldman.
Hello, good evening. I'm Lazarus Southall. I'm also an employee for Joe Kennedy. I'm actually a supervisor. I've been there with them for 10 years, and like Antonio said, like, I support this company. They give opportunities. I know that they might not meet the quota for the DCEO requirements, but they do give opportunities to people like me and Antonio to build and grow and learn new things and, you know, help build the community.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Quail, who will be followed by Amy Heldman.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to comment today. This will be a little bit of repeat for some of you. Commenting today on, I remember, A-10, about a new canoe launch proposed for the Evanston Ecology Center. I've lived in Evanston for 20 years, 20 years and one month, I figured out when sitting here. And I've been kayaking the North Shore Channel pretty much that entire time, so a lot of experience. I'm a big proponent of providing opportunities like this that provide a way for Evanstonians to get out into nature in a healthy way, really utilize the healthy power, the healing power of nature and exercise. The proposed facility provides boats like canoes, kayaks, paddleboards, access to, in my opinion, the best section of the North Shore Channel for that type of boating. Two and a half miles from Emerson to the Bahia Temple offer views that are really unique to our waterway and our community, really hard to find anywhere else in the world. The natural banks in that section are thriving with native plant communities that support habitat for animals like beavers and mink and about seven different species of turtles. Fish like northern pike are all, occupy those waters, and it's one of the few spots in the entire river system that supports little brown bats. The water is clean, there are no waves, the banks are very gradual and allow for easy egress if you found yourself in emergency or if you're a rookie canoeer that happened to tip over or something like that. The North Shore Channel doesn't have the temperature, current, or traffic issues that we highlighted when we recognized all those lifeguards, also a father of a Lake Michigan lifeguard here in Evanston. And that section of the river offers two curves that really provide changing views. You're not just staring at the same thing as you're paddling in that either direction. This section is really ideal for all levels of paddlers, from people the first time in the canoe, kayak, or paddleboard, to people that are very experienced like myself. It's also really great to see that the designers in the facility includes multiple access options for people of all levels of abilities, and that's getting a boat down to the water or finding a place to park or having a convenient place to drop off your boat. It's really a unique facility in the entire Chicago River system that there's very few facilities to provide all of these different things. And it will be, it will be a very welcoming facility to all North Shore Channel users in the system. So I work in my day job and issues of surrounding water, really familiar with things like the Clean Water Act, the minutia of the legalities of how water is treated. The North Shore Channel is what's called a water of the US, the water of the United States. It's owned by all of us for the use and enjoyment by all of us, and I think this facility really accomplishes that. So I really encourage you to approve that item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Amy Heldman.
Hello. This might also be for some of you, but thank you so much for the opportunity to talk today. So my name is Amy Heldman. I am a senior planner at Friends of the Chicago River, and I'm here to also share a report for the proposed North Shore Channel canoe launch in Evanston. This project is greatly aligned with our mission to protect and restore the Chicago Climate River System for all people, water, and wildlife. Evanston has been a long champion for the river as an important ecological and recreational resource in its community, and in this project helps the river even more and opens it to your residents. Our vision is to see the entire 156-mile Chicago Climate River System to flourish as a healthy, biodiverse, climate resilient ecosystem with equitable, open access for all. The Chicago Climate River System has seen remarkable restoration and revitalization over the past 40 years, sparking a surge of interest from a diverse range of river enthusiasts. And Friends continues to invest in improving the health and accessibility of the river system, including along the North Shore Channel. Friends is dedicated to widespread equitable public access to ensure that everyone can access the river. Among other projects, Volunteers for Friends and the Shedd Aquarium have created new habitat by planting thousands of native Illinois shoreline plants along the river edge. Friends has also partnered with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources to install structural habitat and release thousands of channel catfish and northern pike into the channel to take advantage of all the newly created habitat. The proposed new canoe launch relates perfectly with our goals, offers a welcoming gateway for paddlers of all abilities, incomes, and levels of experience, expands recreational access in this location, not only enhances, not only enhances the enjoyment of our river system, but also fosters a deeper connection between the community and the unique ecological river corridor. That connection is good for public health, the local economy, and it contributes to a high quality of life for all residents. We commend the project's design as well, which incorporates universal access principles, features an assisted kayak launch area, preserves existing trees, and adds back native plants that are essential to river edge habitat. This thoughtful approach reflects a commitment to inclusivity, environmental stewardship of the Evanston Environmental Center, and aligns with Friends values and vision for the river system. Beyond recreation, water trails offer significant economic benefits. According to the Outdoor Industry Association's National Recreation Economy Report, Americans participating in water sports contribute over $174 billion to our economy. By supporting this canoe launch, we are investing in both the well-being of our community and the economic vitality of our region. We urge you to support the North Shore Channel canoe launch as it represents a pivotal opportunity to enhance recreational access, promote ecological health, and benefit the river corridor. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. That concludes the people who signed up on the yellow sheet. So we now move to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Sharon Perino, who will be followed by Erica Dorogazi, and then Julia Bun.
Mayor Bis, council members, my name is Sharon Perino. I have been a taxpaying resident of Evanston for the past 22 years. On Saturday, June 29th, at 8:00 AM, I was hit by a bicyclist as I was walking southbound on Maple Avenue. I was on the sidewalk next to the metro station, just a half a block from Davis Street. I sustained numerous injuries. My wrist is broken in two places. I have soft tissue damage to my knee, bruised ribs, and numerous cuts and bruises. I will continue to need occupational and physical therapy for weeks to come. Under Illinois state law, bikes are illegal on sidewalks. Evanston also has an ordinance, 10-9, that states that persons who reside in the city and operate their bicycles on the public way shall register their bikes. No bicycle riding on sidewalks is permitted in the central business district. Also, anyone who violates this ordinance shall receive a citation not to exceed $100. With all the elderly in the downtown area, the North Shore, the Mather, all the various condominium buildings that house seniors, people with disabilities, individuals with walkers, wheelchairs, et cetera, ignoring the need would be nothing short of downright negligence. We are all taxpayers and have been paying taxes longer than any other group of homeowners. Also, hitting a senior citizen pedestrian with a bike can be life-changing. A person can go from being self-sufficient to spending the rest of their lives in a nursing home. The city of Wheaton, along with Willmette, Winnetka, and numerous other municipalities, have successfully installed "Walk Your Wheels" signage in their commercial areas, making pedestrian safety number one. We can do the same. We, as citizens, shouldn't have to share the sidewalks with wheeled vehicles. "Walk Your Wheels" sandwich board signs should be posted throughout the downtown area and under Illinois law in areas where needed. Anyone with a bike, a skateboard, electric scooter, roller skates, et cetera, should walk or carry their wheels. I'm asking this council to put this very important matter on your next meeting's agenda and vote to make pedestrian sidewalks the safe haven they were meant to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Erica Dorogazi, who will be followed by Julia Bun.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Erica Dorogazi. I'm the Secretary of the Evanston Environmental Association. The EEA has a long history of demonstrating a successful public and private partnership. Having the Ecology Center in our town is a really special opportunity, and we are dedicated to continuing to enhance this resource. I'm here tonight, along with others, to advocate for signing the MOU for canoe launch. You guys are probably familiar with some of the EEA annual activities, most of which are positive for our town, so the Evanston Garden Walk, the Bird Buzz Native Plant Sale, the Wild and Scenic Film Festival, and our partnership with schools regarding Evanston. The canoe launch would provide another opportunity for a, opportunity for another recreational opportunity. Previously, the Ecology Center had a canoe launch that provided regular summer camp programs, canoe-to-canal programs for families, programs for ETHS adventure class outings and other youth field trips. As you know, the launch was condemned many years ago, and although we've been hosting canoe programs from the Damrich Rowing Center, we would like to bring this accessible and functional launch back to the Ecology Center. This launch would provide a unique and accessible recreational opportunity to our community and countless opportunities for environmental education and appreciation. As you know, in partnership with the City of Evanston, the EEA has already donated $150,000 for the development of architectural designs for the launch. We now have a really amazing, accessible design and project plan that we would like to, we would like to begin fundraising for this fall. Although many have stated it's an ambition fundraising, ambitious fundraising plan, I'm confident that the EEA has the resources and plan to execute to meet the goals of the MOU. We have, as a board, developed committee, fundraising committees within the board for corporate fundraising, grants, and public events that will all raise funds to support the project. We have recently successfully recorded many new board members that, and will continue to recruit committee members once we officially launch our fundraising efforts. So moving forward, our primary fundraising focus will be on the canoe slash kayak launch for the canal. We plan to make connections with local businesses and corporate supporters to help raise some of the funds for the project. Securing grants will also be a very important component of fundraising. We hope to work closely with city staff for some elements of the grant process, and the MOU will be a critical and qualifying for some of the available grant funding. And we also have recruited board members with grant writing experience that are eager to help us with this project. We also plan community engagement events, which will be a large part of our fundraising efforts. We'll be present at community events, and we have two events already planned for September to raise awareness about the project, and we will host events on our own that will also raise funds. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Julia Bun.
Good evening, councilmen and Mayor Bis. I really appreciate your time and energy and what you're doing for us here in Evanston. As the interim president of the Evanston Environmental Association, also known as the EEA, I wanted to make a brief statement about our support for the building of the canoe launch for the Ecology Center. I am passionate about rebuilding healthy, ecologically relevant places for both people and nature to thrive and interact. This project completely fills the bill and expands the possibilities of increasing access to our waterway that, to our waterway that are presently so limited for this purpose. We are currently building a dynamic board with the EEA of passionate people who are eager to get started implementing this plan. Our board will assist in the fundraising for the building of this project. I believe that this project will be an invaluable resource for the expansion of this community's deepening relationship with the natural world around us. In addition to providing an ADA compliant place for citizens of our, of our city to access the water for kayaking and canoeing, we will also be providing a unique facility for participants of the Ecology Center Nature's programs to interact more with this dynamic waterway that's home to so many fish, turtles, birds, and other creatures. The project is designed to be inclusive and to be used by all members of the community. Hopefully, here at the water's edge, we will nurture both a place for recreation and a stronger relationship for all the curious minds, both young and old, who want to connect to this special place in Evanston. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That concludes the in-person portion of this evening's public comment. The, we now move to the online portion. There's only one person signed up, and this person, I believe, is not in the Zoom. That's Madeline Binder. And seeing as this individual's not in the Zoom, that concludes public comment for the evening. We move on to the next item, the next section of our agenda, which is special orders of business.
I'll move item SP1.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Reed, do you want me to call on you relative to public comment?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Councilmember Reed.
Actually, I just, I don't know. I take offense to just a gross misrepresentation of the facts and an accusation that I have hatred toward Israel and potentially, by extension, toward members of our Jewish community. I think my record speaks for itself, and my attendance at that meeting was blocked by a previously scheduled ward meeting that I hold every month on the last Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM. And that was a special meeting of the Equity Empowerment Commission. I just was, while my name wasn't mentioned, it was taken aback that someone would even make that accusation.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to respond to correct the record from a statement made by someone earlier in public comment regarding the City of Evanston's support of small businesses. There are a number of programs that the city has in place to support small businesses. Just earlier tonight, we talked about the Legacy Business Program. We also have a Small Business Recovery Program. We have a Sustain Evanston Program. We have a storefront modernization program. We have an entrepreneurship support grant and more. I could go on. I just wanted to correct the record and make sure everyone understands that the City of Evanston and the council members are committed to helping small businesses however we reasonably can. Thanks.
And grants directly to Main Street and Howard Street businesses in the same timeframe.
True.
Would someone try to make a motion relative to item SP1?
I'll move item SP1, Fountain Square update.
Councilmember Reed moves that we hear an update on the Fountain Square situation. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Take it away.
Members of the council, thank you very much. My name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. Tonight, we are going to be doing an update on Fountain Square, but actually, the first thing on the presentation is really, not part of the presentation, is to discuss what happened at Fountain Square and what the failure was. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alex Ruggie.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is Alex Ruggie. I'm the Corporation Council. This evening, I actually have the city's outside counsel, Mike Pizano, from Taft Law. I changed. So I'll have Mike come up, and he can explain everything.
Thank you. Mayor Bis, members of the city council, thank you for having me here this evening. I'm happy to come and discuss this case. My name is Michael Pizano. I'm a partner at the law firm of Taft, Statine, and Hollis. I'm a partner at the law firm of Taft, Statineus, and Hollister, and I had the privilege of representing the city to resolve the claim concerning Fountain Square. Fountain Square project, as the City Council knows, was a $5.9 million project to revamp the Fountain Square area. A portion of that project involved the construction of a new fountain, and this fountain was designed as a zero-depth fountain, meaning that the the guts of the fountain and the materials that spray up the water, the water nozzles and the lighting is all below grade. It's below the granite pavers that you see in the picture right there, and it's below the granite pavers here is where the problem arose, and it arose during the construction. So this particular fountain has a pool underneath the granite pavers, and it runs, this pool runs through a system of troughs, and within this trough area are all the mechanicals for the water nozzles and the lighting features. Adjacent to this, the mechanicals are concrete blocks, and each of these concrete blocks has horizontal construction joints. And what I mean by that is you have a slab of concrete that is poured, let's call it the floor, the base of this fountain pool. And throughout this fountain pool, there's vertical concrete pores that are poured after. And when you pour one concrete pore on top of another, you create a joint, and that is a source of water infiltration. And this pool had to be watertight for the fountain to operate. It's at this construction joint within the pool that the structural drawings specified a bentonite water stop to be used. The, well, let me be clear, the specifications called for either a PVC or a bentonite water stop. It didn't specify the manufacturer or the specific type of water stop. It was ultimately up to the contractor to make that selection as to what particular water stop would be used. And the specifications did permit a bentonite water stop. And now, what a bentonite water stop is, it's a piece of material that is placed on the concrete lower joint before the upper concrete is poured. And when water comes into contact ultimately with this bentonite material, it expands to create a pressurized seal of that joint to prevent water from infiltrating. That's what was installed in this, in the construction joint, the horizontal joints throughout this this concrete pool. The problem arose when the contractor selected the incorrect type of water stop. The manufacturer that they selected was Ketco, and Ketco manufactured two types of bentonite water stops. There was one type of water stop that was to be used with a vertical wall that had two rows of steel rebar. That's the that's the product that Copenhagen selected and installed. The problem is, however, the wall that was designed, the design for the walls in this project called for a single row of structural rebar. And Ketco offered a product that would have sufficed for that application. They picked the wrong one, and they installed the incorrect water stop. Ultimately, the project was completed, and in 2021, city officials ultimately realized there was a substantial water loss in this fountain. And they requested an inspection by Christopher Burke Engineering, who engaged a forensic inspection from Wishjani. They quickly identified the source of this water loss to be the bentonite. After further investigation and review of the project records and the actual materials that were used, it was easy to identify that the wrong water stop was used. And so after that, after that information was discovered, the city began contemplating repair options, and throughout a year or two period, I think there were many considerations given to options. No action was taken, as you know, and ultimately, the city decided to file the lawsuit. We pursued that action on behalf of the city, and ultimately, it resolved with a settlement for $800,000. Now, during the course of that case, there was issues raised as to the scope of repair that we were proposing. After, after the source of the problem was identified and repair options were presented, the city went out to bid for a particular scope of work to essentially replace most of the fountain structure. And I think it was in 2022, I think, a bid was received for $1.8 million. And throughout the course of discovery in the case, it was made clear that there were certain elements of that repair specification that was considered different than the original design and what's considered a betterment. And so there were, there were issues with respect to the ability to recover the full $1.8 million that was being sought. Additionally, during the course of trying to figure out what other options were available, there were partial repair options that were presented. There were, you know, isolated repairs, you know, let's find out where the bentonite, you know, is located and failing, and let's replace just that area. But ultimately, the city determined that the ability to access those areas and create a quality repair, that wasn't something the city was willing to do at the time. But there was evidence in the case that present that presented an issue as to, well, what's the reasonable scope of the repair? And so ultimately, those issues led to a to a compromise settlement through a mediation. I'm happy to answer any questions the council has, go into detail on any other portion of this matter.
Thank you. Can I just get a quick, we've got lights already. Can I get a quick sort of tour of the this series of presentations so we can make a determination about whether to hold questions or break for questions now?
Certainly. The rest of the presentation is largely about what the options for repair are, seeking guidance from the City Council and how to move forward.
Okay, then I think it does make sense to break the questions up into two sections. So we'll begin right now with Councilmember Reed, followed by Kelly.
Well, one, I'll just say, for a second there, I wouldn't have known that you were a lawyer and thought you were an engineer, so good job. But actually, my questions are about next steps, so I will hold until then.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, and thank you for that clear, detailed presentation. So understanding that the cost, 1.8 million was considered a betterment, and that was, it was considered to be 1.2, right? If it was just to simply repair without the improvement, which I believe I understood would be this time repairing it with removable tiles, so it would be more easily accessed if there is something that needed to be repaired. That was the 1.8, right? Different, which seems like that would make a lot of sense to do it next time around with with tiles that are easily removed.
That's correct. That's a kind of rough math, I guess you can say, is if you if you remove the betterment, we believe that the number was more reasonable at 1.2 for at least purposes of negotiating a settlement.
And so we settled at 800 rather than 1 point, how did we end up not settling at 1.2?
So it was, it was through a mediation process where we had a retired judge mediate the claim, work with both sides to reach a point where it was an acceptable settlement for both sides. Short answer is, they weren't willing to pay 1.2, but had we, there were risks associated with going forward with litigation in order to recover that 1.2. There were things you'd be taking into consideration. There were other repair proposals being presented by the defendant that that they estimated the repair cost to be $500,000. So there was a risk of the trier effect agreeing that our, even our 1.2 was unreasonable, that it's more reasonable for 500. There were, there were issues with respect to the expenses that we had to incur in order to recover that 1.2, including attorney's fees and expert witness fees to explain to a jury what the repair was, how much it would cost, because it wasn't something that had been done, so we can't point to any actual expense incurred.
Thank you. And defendants, right? Because we settled with both Burke, who we had hired to oversee the project, so it was pretty much settled almost equally between Burke and Copenhagen.
Close to it. And initially, the lawsuit was initially filed against only Copenhagen, but there was a, but the mediation included Christopher Burke's engineering firm, and they did contribute to the settlement as well.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was a really helpful and clear explanation. And so I think with that, we'll move on to the next part of the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
I did just provide some pictures of Fountain Square so that, as we talk, people could see what we're looking at. So this is the fountain generally, where you're standing at the memorial wall, what it looks like, what it did look like when there were jets. And it also could operate purely as a glassy pool with no fountains, a reflection pool that was utilized on some days when there were high winds. There also, this whole plaza, as you can see it now, today, it can be drained and just operate as a plaza, which was a requirement of the design related to the veterans utilizing it for their various memorial services. So quick agenda, we discussed what happened, so options for repair. I think our attorney explained this quite well. The water stop is, you pour the first set of concrete, you lay this water stop in, it's just a coil, sort of rubbery plastic material, and then that will expand slightly when the, it is in contact with water to create a pressurized seal. So this is a case, the joint here is hard to see because somebody had applied a patching material, but the joint is right here, and you can see what happened in our case where the water stop started to expand. It broke the concrete and pushed it out. This is what it looked like, the sections of the concrete were actually being pushed apart from the main concrete wall. Here's an example where a big chunk of concrete got pushed out, and the water stop is now sort of expanding beyond, out of its little area. Here are sections or pieces of some of the concrete that got pushed away. So you can see that this was legitimately no longer holding water as intended. So when we talk about repairing the damaged concrete, there's actually multiple ways we can go about this, and I'll start with the simplest way that is least involved, which is really to literally go in, repair the damaged concrete. Unfortunately, because the fountain is built in layers, you do have to remove the top layer in order to access these concrete channels. This option would consist of removing any unsound concrete, patching it, reinstalling all of the stuff that goes on top, and then performing startup tests. There, this is the least expensive way to do it. That is an opportunity here, but it may be difficult, even with removing a lot of stuff, these channels can be very narrow and have areas that are difficult to access. Not every area that has, that could fail may have failed yet, so even though we do repair on existing, it may occur that other parts over time continue to fail, and the patching is not as durable as just replacing it. So in, the final thing I will say is the way that this fountain is built, the, there is the, the stuff above, the fountain that you see in the granite pavers, there's these troughs that have the damage. Underneath is the piping. The piping was installed in such a way that it's not really accessible, and we do have some concerns that you would damage the piping potentially as you complete the repairs. So this cost is 1.4 million. Here's what it looks like. You see, here's the trough. Here's areas where there was a joint, and you can see that the concrete is necessarily spalled, so we would remove any of the unsound concrete and then replace it with the patching Option two is fairly similar. It basically just does the same thing, but removes the concrete troughs and then just replaces them with new concrete. And so this is a little bit more durable than using the patching material. Still comes with some of the potential risks, and this is what it would look like up here at the top are the fountain nozzles and area. All of this would necessarily be repaired and replaced. The granite pavers would be removed and eventually reinstalled, but you'd have all of these troughs that would be rebuilt. The bottom part of the trough would generally remain because the way that the concrete failed, the water stop sort of pushed it up and out and broke the walls of the troughs more frequently. Option three and four are much more involved. When the piping underneath the fountain was installed, it was all put in place, then a concrete cap was poured on top of it, all the bedding put in prior to installing the concrete troughs. And at this point is when they actually tested the piping to make sure that it was intact. In fact, it failed the pressure test, and so they had to reline, or they had to address the piping wouldn't hold water. So they found a company that would line relatively small diameter pipes, and over a six-week period, that company installed liners on all of the pipes in order to make it so that they would hold water during, under pressure. They did pass the pressure test, and so the fountain went into service. There is a risk, because it is not an ideal situation, that as we remove stuff and take it off and start, the ground can shift slightly, it will increase the stress on the pipes. And so that is where the concern is about the integrity of the piping system, and perhaps there is an option that is less risky for the overall longevity of the fountain, where you go and remove everything and reinstall everything correctly from the ground up, from the basement up. This is considerably more expensive. The price does increase substantially to $2.5 million. This actually was the proposal that was bid, and so we have escalated it to account for some of the extreme construction escalation that we've seen since 2019. But this is what we actually have, a set of contract drawings, more or less, to do. So here, this is where you look at this from above, you can see, like, here's the grid of nozzles, and the troughs are the wider square rectangular grid, and then the piping is in dash lines, sort of grayed out underneath. That is the piping that we're talking about replacing. The final option is actually even a little bit more involved and involves some redesign. So based on what we now understand, having to do a repair on the concrete troughs, those troughs are difficult to access. There is an option that we could potentially redesign it so that instead of concrete troughs under the granite pavers, it's just kind of an open pool. So when you remove the granite pavers, it's a lot easier to access everything, there's less individual walls to fail. This has not been designed. There are some challenges with this type of repair or change in that the current fountain and plaza is rated for traffic to drive on it because we drive trucks on it when we're setting things up, heavier vehicles. If we did this, you would probably lose the ability to drive vehicles. We'd have to be very careful what we placed on the plaza when it's just a plaza. So, you know, the normal putting chairs out for a veteran's memorial service would probably be fine, but we would always have to be cognizant of the weight restrictions. Currently, we don't have to worry about that quite so much. So that option, which wouldn't make the maintenance, the future maintenance and repairs easier, but it comes with potential hardships of limiting the weight of what can be on there, is also the most costly, and we estimate that to be about $300,000 more expensive. We do not have this design. And so this would change, instead of that grid we saw of concrete troughs, instead, when you looked at this, you would see under the granite pavers, there would be sort of an open area that all of the nozzles would just be drawing the water from, or although I said that incorrectly, all of the water would collect in just an open pool and then be redirected to the pumping system and through the nozzles. So our next steps and what we're really asking for guidance on are kind of determining our pathway forward. Options one and two are actually pretty similar in that they basically look at sort of doing the minimal repair that we can get away with, just replacing the level of damaged infrastructure, and they are at one price point. Options three and four are much more involved and basically involve reconstructing the fountain from the ground up, and so they are at a different price point. We don't necessarily have to decide all the details tonight. We don't necessarily have to decide all the details tonight between exactly what we want between option three and four. But we do need to more or less determine a pathway forward. Do we want to go with a partial repair, higher risk but much less expensive? Or a full repair, or full replacement, which is lower risk but much more expensive? After, or there is always an option to not repair the fountain. It does operate as a plaza. It is a unique challenge for Fountain Square, but certainly it is, it's an option that we've been able to utilize that plaza thanks to the way that it was designed pretty freely over the last few years since the fountain failed. So that is a third option that we could consider. That is a zero-cost option. So we can, however we choose to go forward, we really will need to work with a consulting firm. Christopher Burke was the original designer on this. They worked with the fountain company to come up with the design. They are not necessarily fountain designers. They actually prepared the set of drawings that we bid with the repair, or basically rebuilding the fountain. So we can continue to work with Christopher Burke, although basically their contract is up and we would need to enter into a new contract with them. Or we can go out with, for a separate consulting firm. The, it is likely that the fees that we would pay for the redesign would be substantially higher and it would, as it is a firm that would not be familiar with the work and would more or less have to start from the beginning. However, that is also an option. And then however we choose to move forward, we will budget funding for 2025 accordingly.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Burns, followed by Nusma, followed by Revel.
First, can I have you pull up the options one and two once more?
So this, this is option one.
All right. Can you switch to two? Thank you.
This is posted on the website also.
If you were to quantify the risk of options one and two, could you, or?
That is extremely challenging because it's, it is based on knowledge that there was a flaw during construction that was repaired. But it's, it's difficult to say what the risk is. It is a risk, but it might be a small risk.
I'll just first ask your opinion as our engineer. Which option are you leaning toward?
This, this option is 1.6 million, which requires the city to put in $800,000. That's a lot of money. If it fails again, I think it will be very hard to come back from. This is not small, though, because it doubles the city's investment to 1.6 million dollars once you consider the settlement money, 1.7 million. So that is a substantial increase, but it does make it far more likely that the fountain will live out its useful life.
So option three is, is?
Option, so I, you know, I participated in the decision to create option three, which was bid prior. So yes, that is the option. However, I also understand fiscal realities.
Sure.
However, we wish to proceed. I am comfortable with that.
Sure. The, the one thing I, I wish there was a way, or if there is a way, I'd love to, you know, see it, if there's a way to really assess the risk of options one or two. And, you know, are we, is there, with similar repair, I don't know if this happens too often, but, you know, is there a 10% failure rate or potential for failure? Is it 50? Or, you know, if, if, I wish I had more information. Because certainly my preference would be the least, the, you know, spending less money and getting the same result. But the last thing I think we need is for us to spend a bunch of money and then the fountain fails again. So I think if you're looking for feedback, I'm, at this point, without more information and talking to engineers or other than you, I'm going to lean on you and I think that the residents want to see the fountain repaired. They want to have their kids splashing around there. I remember the year that it was completed and, you know, just watching the joy on some of my folks' faces and the little ones. So folks want it. One question that I have, so I guess I'll lean at this moment toward option three without further information. I want to understand timelines. So we, and apologies, I stepped out of the room for a second. But if, you know, we get it in the 2025 budget, the council approves whatever option we approve, when do we expect the fountain to be operational?
Most likely, the earliest the fountain could be operational is 2026. It just takes a certain amount of construction time and making sure. So even, even if we get this designed and we get it bid, say, fall, it's still going to take time to procure the fountain materials and
Fall of 2025, okay.
Then it will still take time to do the construction.
But summer 2026, we would?
I don't know that it would be open summer 2026. That I would have to really talk to a fountain manufacturer to understand what their timelines are.
Okay. I'll yield for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Nusma, followed by Revel.
I have a few questions. I just first want to start off by saying that, that these elements, water features and other kind of placemaking elements are important. You know, on one end, I was talking to the community member out in the hallway who spoke at public comment. I was kind of expressing that on one end, you have people who are, we want to make sure that they're not riding bicycles on the sidewalk. And they're on the sidewalk because there's not enough infrastructure on the street. And then on the same public comment, we have someone saying, why do we have some, why do we need bike, bike infrastructure, right? Which is the challenge of doing this job, like these competing interests. Everybody has a different opinion, a different take on what we should prioritize. But to me, this matters in that we have people saying that our downtown is dead. And, you know, I wish that conversations about bond rating and, you know, other fiscal, you know, responsible discussions could draw people downtown, that they would all kind of convene downtown, Fountain Square and not, and, 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 you know, shop at our businesses. But that's not what draws individuals and families to anywhere. Barely in our finance and budget committee, let alone downtown. And so these placemaking features, elements are a draw. They are attractive. It's what makes people kind of, you know, draw to an area, but also stay a while. And so I think these investments are important. I do have questions. However, we need to, to proceed with this in, in the right way. But I, I just want to, if you want the downtown to, to be buzzing, yes, we need to support small businesses, but we also need to make it an attractive place so that people want to be there. First question is, who designed this fountain?
I apologize. I'm drawing a blank on the actual manufacturer. Christopher Burke worked with a fountain manufacturer such as Waterworks, and they worked together to create a fountain design. I'm drawing a blank on the actual manufacturer.
Okay, because it's, did we, do you remember if we had any concerns at that point about the design? Or did we feel confident about it back then?
We, we felt comfortable with the design.
Did we not know about these other options and costs before we settled? Or were we aware of them?
Well, we're generally aware that what, that the repair of the fountain in a more robust manner was going to probably be more than the settlement. I think that the attorney explained the reasoning behind the settlement. And I'm sure you'd be happy to answer more questions.
Yeah, if you, if you want, I mean, because my question is, it, we, we thought we would not, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what I took from it is we didn't know if we would be successful if we took it to trial. And because they had lower numbers of how they could repair it, I think 500,000, but we're not getting numbers anywhere near that. And so I don't know if the concern was that they were saying, oh, well, we can repair it ourselves for that amount. And, but I would think that a, that a jury or a judge would, if we told them that, well, we don't trust them anymore, right? Which I think is the information we were getting, is like, we don't want to go with them because they made a mistake. And, and so these are our costs if we were to go out and rebid it and, and find a contractor to perform the work again. So do we not think that would be compelling enough to a judge or jury?
Well, it's, there's two issues that were presented by our, the damage analysis we presented. The first one is timing. These numbers are what you're seeing today. The numbers that we were working off of were from 2022. And there's, there's an argument to be made that the defendant shouldn't have to pay additional money because the city did not, did not complete the repair in a timely manner where, when it was cheaper to do it. So that was the issue of, you know, when you're comparing the numbers today from 2022, I don't think you're comparing apples to apples anymore. You know, the, the, the costs have increased so much that, you know, it is, it is an issue in the cases now as to whether, whether you mitigated your damages is what they refer to it as. So, so the first issue is, is timing. The, the second is what we were presenting as the scope of repair. This was, you know, under the law, a breach of contract. They didn't perform their contract properly. What the city's entitled to receive from that is whatever the cost is to have the city get what they were paying for. And what we were presenting was something different than the city had originally paid for. And so it created a difference of, of maybe $400,000, I think was the estimate during the negotiations as to, as to what that better design was worth. And so those, those were the, the issues in terms of like how we presented our damages. And then ultimately, there would be competing, competing arguments as to what's a reasonable scope of repair. As much as the city would like to replace the entire fountain, they would argue that's unreasonable. You, you can put yourself in the same position by just completing a partial repair, and that's the reasonable way to go about it. And it's certainly something a jury or a judge could have accepted. And that would be much lesser of a number. So those are risks that are associated with pushing this case to a trial and ultimately letting somebody else decide.
And then with option three, well, let me ask this. Is there, is there any other place that has a similarly designed fountain installed somewhere?
I am not aware of that, but I, there probably is a place that has a similarly designed fountain. We would just need to reach out to the manufacturer and find out where else they put in a similar fountain.
I'm just, in my aspect, I'm just curious if we go with option three, just how reliable that design is? And do we expect to have to make any repairs in the future? And, you know, it would be tough for staff to respond to that. And so if we could find someone that has this, you know, this design installed, we could ask them, you know, how well it's held up. That's all for now. Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by kind of everybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to lead by saying we need a fountain. It's Fountain Square. People love the fountain. I want to explore, at least hypothetically, another option. Like rather than repairing or rebuilding the below-ground fountain, what if we built an above-ground fountain? How much would that cost? Could we save money and end up with a fountain that might not be quite as fun to splash around in, but it would still be a fountain in Fountain Square and maybe save us a million bucks?
I, you know, I cannot answer that off the top of my head. It definitely seems that there are probably even, some of it's just based on size and the fountain design as to what you're looking at in terms of that cost. So it's something I would just have to look into costs of fountains before I could really weigh in on that. But it is definitely possible to build an above-ground fountain.
Ask by show of hands or body language, if my colleagues on the council could opine on that possibility. I'm saying no, no. Meh. Okay. Let the record reflect that the council has indicated meh on that idea. I want to ask Andy Vick, who I see in the audience here, to speak to the value of the fountain to downtown businesses and, you know, what we're maybe losing by not having the fountain there. And also, as long as he's at the microphone, if you could speak if, about the impact, potential impact of the construction. If we do do this rebuild, it's going to be fairly involved and disruptive and what we should be mindful of there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, member of councils. Council, my name is Andy Vick. I'm the director of the Downtown Evanston Business District. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. I would echo what Councilmember Burns said and what you also said, Jonathan, about the importance of placemaking and creating a destination in downtown. We have many challenges in downtown. And one of the things that we have been focusing on in our office is how do we bring more people downtown so that they can shop in our businesses, eat in our restaurants? The fountain, as I have seen pictures of, was one of those quintessential placemaking successes when it was working. People came for the fountain. Families came for the fountain. I've seen pictures of children enjoying it and parents watching from the side with smiles on their face. That is how you create a destination. Not, fountains aren't the only answer. But in this case, that was a tool that really worked to bring people downtown. And so I am very pleased that we're having this conversation about repairing, replacing, restoring, whatever word you want to use. I think the fountain is a critical piece of our downtown infrastructure. It is at the heart of our Fountain Square, which is the, the brand that we sell as Downtown Evanston, or one of the brands that we sell. So I'm very supportive of trying to find a solution. I understand the fiscal challenges. I'm not an engineer. I don't know those nuances. But I do believe strongly that this is a amenity that we need to restore. I have been approached many times by citizens, what's going on with the fountain? When will the fountain come back? It is one of those key questions that I don't really have an answer for. And I think we, as a community, need to find an answer for that. So very much in favor of it being a powerful driver of economic development, a way to support our businesses in downtown, and a way to project the image of our community that I think we want to project to the outer world.
Maybe at this point, we can have Laura talk about potential construction timeline and impact, and then you can jump back in.
Sure.
So if we are reconstructing the fountain and we decide to go with something very similar to option three, I think we can update the plans relatively simply if we work with Christopher Burke and go out to bid in a timely fashion. But I do think that the fountain is probably going to take a season to construct. Now, when, when Fountain Square Plaza was done, there was a lot involved. First of all, Copenhaver blew the schedule by over a year. And so they had other challenges besides this particular one. And so the downtown was really torn up for over two years. It was really a challenge. But the South Plaza is not going to be addressed through this. And so the South Plaza will remain, and we will work just in the North Plaza area. But it will take pretty much, I think, six to eight months to construct the fountain.
And so that, during that time, the North Plaza would essentially be fenced off?
Yes.
And it'll look like a construction zone. It would be ugly and not nice.
Yes.
At least for a while. So if I could ask Andy to speak to that, and, you know, we've had some conversations a while back with some downtown business owners who were not thrilled about that prospect. What's your take?
Yeah, it's a very touchy situation. I know the merchants on Main Street have been dealing with construction. That particular part of downtown, as you all know, has seen a lot of work over the last year. And there are a number of businesses who have And there are a number of businesses who have been impacted in a negative way. And I guess my, my ask to city council is that as we embark on this process, I think as much communication and explanation as we can provide to our downtown, particularly in that immediate vicinity, um, they need to understand what the process is going to look like. They need to understand how it's going to impact them. They need to understand what can the city do to mitigate against some of that impact. So I think we really need to be very cognizant of the fact that this kind of work is going to be, it's going to be very disruptive. And I think about the programming that we do in our office. Uh, it's going to be disruptive to us to a lesser extent, but it still will be disruptive. As Laura said, there are two sides to the plaza. So you can activate one while the other one's being worked on. But the visual scape, if you will allow me that language, uh, is going to be impacted. And so we really need to think very seriously. Um, yes, we want to do this work, but how can we do it in a way that's going to be as respectful and transparent as possible to the businesses that are obviously going to be impacted? And certainly we will work with you to help messaging and, and do whatever we can from our office.
Thanks. Uh, thanks, Andy. Some additional questions for Laura back, uh, to the options here. These costs include the engineering? These are budgetary costs at this point?
No, they don't include.
They don't include engineering. So two and a half plus, how much for engineering?
Uh, probably another, it, again, it depends. Option three is different, but generally we'd look at 10 to 15% for engineering.
Plus another 10, 15% for engineering. Okay. And if you could go to option four a second, yeah, and explain what the, yeah, benefits of option four would be?
So one thing we learned by having a massive fountain failure of the concrete troughs is that is really hard to get into those concrete troughs. And when there are future um, needs for repair or maintenance, it will be similarly difficult, even if we rebuild the current fountain. This option would make it easier by eliminating concrete troughs used to collect the water and create just an open area to collect the water. So once you're in it, it's not like you have a ton of room. And currently you have, you know, like 18 to 24 inches in height, but you would have um, less constraints horizontally, so it'd be easier to get in and move around.
All right. So option four would be easier to maintain at some point in the future.
Challenges.
Yeah, but the trade off is we couldn't drive on it. We couldn't put a heavy stage on it. Uh,
It would be limiting. So again, we haven't asked an engineer exactly how much weight could you put on it? But there's just so many fewer supports, it stands to reason that you would not be able to.
Scenario when, you know, if we do option four, 10, 15 years down the road, when none of the folks who are involved now are on the job, somebody has no idea and says, yeah, go ahead, park the truck right there while you set up the stage and crash. We're, uh, we're back to where we started. So, uh, I guess I'm leaning for, uh, towards option three, which seems to be maybe what we're homing in on. So, um, that's all for now.
Um, so the, there, there actually are also, there's at least one person signed up to go for a second time, but the people lined up to speak for a first time at this moment are Councilmember Revelle, followed by Saffron, followed by Hidda Katis, followed by Wen.
Um, so Laura, it's been quite a while since the fountain functioned. Could you remind us, like, how many days of children splashing around did we have in the summer?
Uh, we, so we only ran it really for one summer. We turned it on on Memorial Day weekend. We decommissioned it slightly after Labor Day weekend. We ran it all the way through Labor Day weekend. It actually was turned on slightly before Memorial Day weekend in sort of a testing mode. Um, at the end of that season is when our facility staff that maintains the fountain first noticed that it was losing a lot of water. And so they actually asked Copenhagen to check into it. Copenhagen said they fixed that problem. And then we were going to check it thoroughly when we turned it on the next season, which was 2020. And we were no, we were not allowed to operate it because of the pandemic. And so that's also complicated, the challenges of figuring out what, you know, in a timely fashion that it was failing. So we didn't, we weren't able to run it until 2021. And when they turned it on in 2021, it was clear that it just didn't hold any water. So all the water is supposed to recirculate. You just make up the evaporation loss essentially with new water. We were just basically, water was flowing straight through and we weren't recirculating anything.
Right. But so when, in the summer, when we were using it, we, we used it, it was on every day?
Yes.
Just for a couple of hours or all day long?
It was on every day, except the only time when we would not have it on is if we were having some sort of event, like a veterans memorial ceremony in the plaza. So, uh, we basically left it on every day, um, all day. If it was, it has sensors so that it can, did have sensors so that it could moderate the fountain height if the wind was particularly windy. And if we knew there was going to be a really big challenge, we would turn off the jets. But largely we just left it on with a basic program to run the fountains in sort of a simple modulating way all the time.
Yep, okay. Um, well, I, uh, I, I also like Councilmember Burns' um, query about, you know, do we have any, does anybody have any experience with this type of fountain to know just how reliable it would be if we were to fix it up under one of our various scenarios? So I guess I would encourage us to see what the company might have to say to us. Maybe this is the only one. Um, I guess I will say I am open to a completely different idea for our Fountain Square. Um, completely different kind of fountain. I have to say I'm even open to no fountain. So, um, I mean, I'm, I mean, we're talking a significant amount of money. Um, but I am persuaded also by the argument that it's, it's an important draw for our, for our downtown. So I, I'm not 100% against having a fountain, but I, it's, it's a lot of money.
Councilmember Saffron, followed by Hidda Katis, followed by Wen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess these questions are all for Luke or Laura as well. I, I don't want to, I, I, I mean, the first thing, it hasn't been part of the discussion yet that I'd like to flag is, um, the importance of the fact that this is supposed to also be a memorial for service members who died in service to their country. Has there been any discussion with the American Legion or any of the other veterans groups who are involved in the initial planning of the Fountain Square Plaza in 20, I don't know, when did it start, 2016, 2015? Uh, about what impacts any of these potential, uh, construction timelines might have for the memorial wall and, um, what their opinions might be on that?
Uh, good evening, customer Saffron. Um, we wanted to have the conversation here at the council first before having some additional conversations with other stakeholders.
Because I think if we're going to look at, um, you know, potential alternative fountain proposals, um, that may change the design of the plaza in its entirety, we should bring them in as soon as possible because it's possible that some of those ideas, while they may contribute to the downtown placemaking and contribute to, uh, some of the things that, uh, Mr. Vick mentioned, uh, they may be competing objectives. And the earlier that we figure that out, the better. Um, I mean, the, um, the original design of the plaza included a flaw where, uh, in order to add a name to the memorial wall, we had to fabricate and then tie our new panel. Um, I think, you know, that was an oversight that happened at the beginning. It created a lot of, uh, it was a difficult thing for, um, some Evanston families who had lost service members. Uh, I'd, I'd like us to be very mindful of not making those mistakes, uh, as we go forward here. Um, in addition, I'd like to, you know, it was brought up in public comment. There's some of the things at Fountain Square that have nothing to do with the fountain or any of the engineering stuff that we're talking about that can be improved, uh, as it relates to maintenance and security. Um, and then, um, have we undertaken any inquiry as an organization as to how we got here and how as we undertake projects like this, we can avoid? I don't want to say mistakes because some of this is foreseeable, some of it wasn't. But I mean, we've had to make replacements on the south end of the plaza. Now we're dealing with the north end of the plaza in a much more expensive, potentially expensive way. Has there been any sort of organizational inquiry, looking backwards on things that we could have done better? Um, things that we'll do better in the future that would avoid situations like this, um, going forward?
Sure. Um, thank you for that question. I'm happy to start and Laura can, uh, fill in here as well. Um, in early July, we did have a conversation with Councilor Pizzano of how, you know, what can we learn from this, um, project, um, especially as it relates to going forward? Um, you know, one of the things we talked about in that conversation is do you have even more stringent requirements as far as experience or portfolio work, um, for the RFP that you put out? Um, it's a balancing act because the, the more stringent or the higher level of, uh, experience you require could result in even fewer bidders or even zero or one. Um, and then there's also, you know, potential cost impacts of that. Um, I think, you know, going forward, it's such a unique, uh, niche, uh, project that it's, uh, just, it's, it's a project that probably just requires, um, even additional, um, scrutiny and oversight just because of the nature of it as opposed to like, you know, paving streets and so forth, right? Um, I'll let Laura weigh in on this. I think that maybe at some point in, along the process, there might have been an option to, um, request a, a change in the foreman of the project. Um, and then finally, I was going to mention that, um, Deputy City Manager Ruger is agreed to, um, also do a review of the project, um, in an effort to, you know, um, glean, you know, lessons learned going forward for future projects.
Okay. And I, I also just note, um, and it's not comparable in size and I assume very not comparable in budget, but, um, the Crown Fountain in Millennium Park is an excellent example of a fountain that, um, creates activity that people seem to enjoy. Uh, and I would imagine that some of the engineering challenges, um, had to be addressed in the construction of that fountain as well.
Councilmember, uh, Hidda Katis, followed by Wen.
Yeah, um, just want to talk a little bit about something we haven't, um, touched upon. So, you know, th- this has been a really drawn out process, um, you know, legally. And I know there's people at home probably thinking like, why did we settle for the number we settled? Um, and part of that, um, you know, we spoke about earlier, but also there were definite, um, questions about the ability to pay if we asked for more. And so our number ended up being lower than the cost of potentially doing this, um, replacement. Um, there are also very serious concerns about, um, the workmanship that was already done. So for me, um, options one and two, um, while they're cheaper, I think we really run the risk, um, of running into pro- um, problems in the future. Um, and for me personally, those are off the table because I'm, based on what we've learned through the process of finding out what happened during the project, like, it's almost inevitable that there's more shoddy work that we haven't run into that, um, was there. So I would be leaning towards option three. I think there's been some really good points brought up about timing and, and, um, working with our partners with downtown and also the American Legion. Um, I think, you know, um, this project's going to take a long time. Um, and I think after we kind of, you know, get our, our ducks in line here, I think the next steps would definitely be to bring all the, um, stakeholders together to figure out, um, what works best timing wise and also get their input. Because, you know, things have changed, but I, I do think it's, um, very important to keep the placemaking, but also, um, you know, work with, you know, the, the memorial and the, our armed forces, um, folks in town to make sure that we're meeting everyone's needs, so.
Uh, Councilmember Wen.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I, I am wary of options one and two for the reasons that, um, Councilmember Harakas raised. And also because, uh, having been on this council when the old fountains were in existence and we repaired those constantly. Uh, they were, they were in old technology that we kept patching over and over and over again. And I don't want us to see, e- end up in that situation again. Uh, I do recognize the, the, you know, how delightful it was, the placemaking, this, to have this, um, wonderful dancing fountain in our, in, in our downtown and how attractive that was for folks. There is a similar fountain, uh, on Navy Pier outside the Children's Museum. And so I think it would be interesting, I, I'm assuming it's still operating and, but, and, and, uh, we could check with them. I think it would be worth, um, certainly giving Navy Pier's maintenance folks a call to find out, uh, how that, how that is done over the years. Um, so as expensive as it is, I think that option three is, it would be the, the one I would prefer. I think option four, for the reasons Councilmember Nusma outlined, I think would be a mistake. It's, it's spending more money and it's making something more fragile. Um, and we don't, we need something that's not going to require being handled with, with kid gloves. Thank you.
Uh, so this, that concludes the people who want to speak for first crack. Uh, so I'm going to actually take a, offer, no, ah, Director Thompson? Can I just grab you quickly? Um, I was going to actually ask a question before we went for a second round. Um, as I understand it, Fountain Square is, in some formal sense, a city park. Is that correct? So, hey, I'm curious if you have thoughts about this, either as the Director of Parks and Rec, you know, concretely because it is a city park, or just more broadly, somebody who kind of oversees a lot of programming in town? If you have any kind of instincts or insights that you'd be interested in sharing?
Well, option four scares me with the open pool. That's, that's a lot. Um, but I, I will say that even for the maintenance, for the actual fountain, it is a fountain, it's Fountain Square. But I think that we should have some more conversations with not only the Parks and Rec Board, but also our community members as to what they would like to see at Fountain Square. It is a park, um, and it is not being utilized as such at this point. Um, and so I would like to get some more understanding about what should take place at Fountain Square before we make some decisions, um, about what we do with Fountain Square. It is a park.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Um, so now we're going to go, uh, for second cracks, Councilmember Kelly with four minutes left.
Thank you. Um, and conversations have begun at the American Legion with the post in, you know, very careful, respectful way and understanding that, um, it is really important, that central location, um, the possibility of relocating, but still maintaining, um, some space of reverence, of contemplation there, maybe on the south side, while, um, perhaps relocating the memorial, um, to another part of town. So that has begun and there is a group at the post, um, that has formed to study and review that. So I just want to put that out there. And I just want to say there's always going to be a risk with any fountain that we're going to put in. There's always going to be a risk. And I mean, there are plenty of these splash pads everywhere around us that have been working for years. I initially thought, oh, let's just do, you know, European style fountain where you can go and sit on the edge, the kind that we used to have. Um, but I've overwhelmingly heard from residents that they really, really love the zero gravity splash pad fountains, that everybody, there's many elderly people that live there. They love watching it, watching the children. So that's, um, so I really appreciate Director Thompson's, um, thoughts and recommendation to, you know, vet this out through the Parks and Rec Board and with the community. Again, um, what I heard from the community was different than what I had thought that I would like. But again, overwhelming response to, to repair what we had. And, you know, we just built, we just built a whole new fountain. I'd hate to think of this now, we're going to build a whole nother new fountain. And given that with Jenny estimated it to be at 1,600 to 1,800 with an improved, um, version of that, I would hope that we would just move in that direction if that's the feedback we get from the community. Um, it seems to me that, you know, isn't, being incorrectly installed sort of speaks more than beyond just the bentonite. I think we do have to, as you mentioned, Burke is not in the business of designing fountains. And Burke was part of, um, clearly, um, you know, there's an issue there too because we settled with Burke and Copenhagen. So I, I agree with Councilmember. So I, I agree with Councilmember Winn and that we should look at where these have been installed successfully and talk to the folks there. And I also agree with Councilmember Sufferden that we do need to look at maintenance and security, you know, separately. And at the same time, at Fountain Square, the gentleman that gave us a presentation this evening, it is disturbing. This is our central location downtown, so I really hope we can have our outreach team or whatever it takes, whatever we need there to ensure that this is a beautiful space So right now I'm leaning towards, you know, one of the zero gravity fountain, I don't know what you call these splash pads. I know they exist in communities nearby and people love them, so I don't know which version of this, but I would hope we wouldn't have to spend that much more, you know, after more than a million more on top of the 800,000. Thank you.
Continuing with second opportunities, Councilmember Reed with two and a quarter minutes left.
I'll be very brief. I just also want to add my appreciation to the discussions that are going on with the VFW. I, I think it may factor in in some way with the design here and what we choose to do, but, and it was brought up by a couple of folks, but I do think that if the group decides to move, that they think that moving the memorial is a good idea. I, I think it would be a great idea. Kind of somewhat in, I don't know, it's honoring these people who served us, but I'd say anywhere that it is, I think is a great place, but it's kind of in an awkward place, given the business that's right there and it's just kind of blocking the, blocking the door. So I think whatever redesign we take into consideration, I think that should be a part of the plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns with a minute and a quarter left.
I just want to say, whatever, I like the design because it makes the space flexible. I think it's important to, to, to keep that in place. It's nice to, for it to, at one moment be a water feature and in another moment, you know, we can program it into, you know, so we can maximize its benefits. So I think that's incredibly important. I think that's something we've talked about, I've talked a lot. You've told me, Manager Stowe, that we're, that's how we're thinking about 909 Davis, like trying to make every, you know, get the most out of every space, make sure that there's no spaces like this space that is only used, you know, a few times out of the month and instead make, make sure that it's getting, you know, daily, weekly use. But, so that, I would just, I would encourage us to continue to allow it to be flexible in the way it is today.
Thank you very much. That concludes our discussion on this topic. Obviously, a lot of interest and a lot to continue thinking through and we'll look forward to further discussion on this matter. Thank you so much for the input.
Thank you.
I'll move item SP2, Envision Evanston 2045 update.
Motion fails for lack of a second, apparently. Councilmember Reed moves that we hear in Envision Evanston 2045 update. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor Biss, Members of the City Council, Clerk Mendoza. I'm going to try to breeze through this update really quickly because I know we've got a long agenda here this evening. So just in terms of where we are at in the process, the project team is wrapping up the next phase of engagement, which has included a dive into the draft goals that have been developed based on community input to date. Two weeks ago, we held several focus group sessions at the downtown library to explore everything from jobs and the local economy to public gathering spaces, like we just talked about, housing and community development and equity and prosperity. These events were promoted to members of our city boards, commissions and committees, those who are active or working in the topic areas, and also members of the public. On August 24th, the consultant team facilitated a workshop where approximately 50 community members participated in exploring development scenarios at three locations across the community. The consultant team also obtained feedback on the draft goals and the draft vision statement at several locations, including parks, grocery stores and local hair salons, in addition to capturing perspectives at local events such as the downtown summer sounds and Evanston Maids Maker Market. The Evanston Art Council also worked with staff and combined their annual social with a town hall to discuss Envision Evanston 2045. And just last week, we shared many of the same questions that were asked during the focus group sessions via an online questionnaire. In just four days, we received over 100 responses to that questionnaire. And if you've taken the time, you definitely deserve congratulations because it's a very long questionnaire. So thank you for taking the time on that. Still on the horizon in terms of engagement, community leaders are working with HDR and McAdams to host additional input sessions later this month. The Parks and Rec Board will hold a special meeting on the 12th to discuss Envision Evanston 2045. And we're also invited to facilitate discussions at the Sixth and Seventh Ward Joint Virtual Meeting on September 19th. Last, we've also been invited by the Evanston Chamber of Commerce Board to participate in their upcoming meeting to hear input from, from them. So in terms of what you can look forward to on the horizon, on Wednesday, staff will be working with the Land Use Commission to solidify their schedule for the remainder of this year, as they consider and ultimately make a recommendation to you all on the proposed comprehensive plan and zoning code. There were several recent referrals made by the mayor and co-sponsored by several members of the city council. And so our goal is to have discussions with the Land Use Commission on those referral topics to explore best practices and what other communities are doing related to those to inform the zoning code rewrite. Later this month, a zoning diagnostic report will be released, which reviews the city's existing zoning ordinance against the draft goal statements that have been prepared. And this fall, which we all got a brief introduction to over the weekend with the brisk weather, you can watch for the rollout of the draft comprehensive plan and zoning code. We anticipate several in-person sessions that will explore and take a look at these draft documents. And then those will all be presented to the Land Use Commission via the formal legislative process. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have on this process. And if I can put a quick plug in to please promote this online questionnaire, we really, really appreciate the feedback that we're getting on that.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Newsma, followed by Sufferden.
Thank you. One, thank you and the team for all the work that you all have been doing over the last eight months, more? I don't know. I mean, it's, I'm sure on top of everything else that you all are regularly doing, this has been a lot. There are some folks in the community who feel that this is moving too fast. I don't think it's moving too fast necessarily, but I think this has been one of the, I mean, it's our comprehensive planning process and it's our, but I think it's been one of the more comprehensive engagement processes that we've under, that we've, we've undergone. Can you maybe, what are your thoughts on, on that? I'll just leave it open ended.
Yeah. I think from staff's perspective, you know, this particular timeline, we've been given direction by city council to present you all with a new zoning code that is equitable by 2025. This was part of your council goals that were set late last year. You also gave direction when you authorized us to negotiate a contract with the consultant firm to move this work forward on a specific timeframe. So I think from staff's perspective, we're on track to deliver on that. And, you know, we, we look forward to working with the Land Use Commission, the city council on that. We've also heard, I think, from community members that they've provided a lot of input via various different planning processes that the city has engaged in over the last five plus years. And they want to see action. And so from that standpoint, I think staff feels that we are being responsive to not only what we're hearing from the community, but also the direction that's been given by this body.
Thank you for that. And, and, and I'll say that, you know, I think we voted unanimously, I believe, to engage in this process and approve all of the, the steps here. And I'm committed to seeing us, and I think we all are committed to seeing this move forward in a timely manner because we understand the impact that, you know, the referrals that Councilmember Mayor Biss has put forward, as well as many other of us, will have a huge impact on affordability in our town, on the availability of housing generally, certainly affordable housing, but housing generally. And I think, you know, now we've, we've waited 100 years for some of this stuff. And so I, I don't know if I could say that we're, maybe we're moving too slow still. But with this, you know, this is going to the Land Use Commission and ultimately the Land Use Commission doesn't have final say on this. And so maybe this is, how do we ensure that, and maybe this is a question for Council Rugby, maybe it's a question for Mayor Biss or whoever, but how do we ensure that these important policies both get a fair hearing and we get the feedback that we need from residents and from our Land Use Commission? But how do we ensure that we, we continue on this trajectory of getting this done, getting these policies before this body sooner than later? I don't know who wants to.
I mean, I'll, I think it's a question probably for all three of us, but, you know, I would highlight what Liz said, that she's going to be working the day after tomorrow with the Land Use Commission. I've been in touch not only with the Chair of the Land Use Commission, but with all the members of the Land Use Commission, who've expressed a lot of excitement. And, you know, their question for me has not been, is this too fast or is this a good idea? Their question is, how soon can we set the calendar so I can make sure that I'm fully engaged and I'm at every meeting, that I'm, I'm prepared in advance? And so I'm really, I was really pleased to hear you say that you're going to be setting that calendar with them. As you indicate, they're not the final determining body, which is appropriate. We're all accountable to directly to the, to the residents and the Land Use Commission members are more indirectly. But, you know, the plan is to get a calendar in place that they're all bought in on, that is, does both things, which I believe to be absolutely achievable and compatible, which is to get enough thoughtful, careful, meticulous input and to move forward on the calendar that we're talking about, because you're absolutely right. We've waited a very long time and once this stuff, in whatever form the community and we ultimately decide to finalize it in, is enacted, then the effects will be felt gradually. So it's not as though the day after passage, everything that we were hoping comes from this will be achieved. It's that that starts a gradual, years-long process during which the benefits to affordability and sustainability and community cohesion and economic development will be gradually felt. So I think dragging our feet is actually really quite irresponsible and dangerous. Sorry, was that, maybe, maybe I went off message. I don't know, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just echo that, you know, the goal is different also from past processes where we are facilitating discussions on these important topics with the Land Use Commission ahead of the formal legislative process. So not only are there opportunities to provide public comment during that formal process, there are also going to be opportunities to have discussion via town hall conversations, via discussions with the Land Use Commission before they're asked to make a recommendation on these changes. So that's ultimately what we're trying to build towards is providing enough information and time to have these important conversations on, on the timeframe that's been set.
Thank you. And final question, unless, Council Rugby, unless you have something to add there?
I would just say, I echo what Liz said. The process will follow the due process that we always follow. So the current city code maps out the hearing that will happen, the rules for the hearing, the notice requirements, the ability for the public to participate and testify, and then the land use to take a vote and then the move to city council. So it'll follow the, the standard due process procedure.
Okay, thank you. And this is, I hope it's not an ignorant question, but why is, I feel like the Land Use Commission is more, I feel like they're more like a judge, right? They're interpreting the code as it is. And I'm, and, and I feel like what we're doing, the process that we're engaging in is really, it's, we are creating new community standards and new values and just why, and please, like, but why is the Land Use Commission the appropriate body for, for this?
I'm happy to take this question. So it's rather simple. The city code states that any amendment to the zoning code has to go through the Land Use Commission.
Yeah. Can I?
Yeah, please.
So you may recall that during this council, we merged the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Plan Commission, which are, as I understand it, both statutory, those bodies both have statutory responsibilities. And you're right that the Zoning Board of Appeals is a more traditionally judicial-ish body and the Plan Commission might be more of a policymaking body. But because of the merger, you have a, a body that essentially has some of each component in its duties and functions.
Okay. Yeah. I, I just, I wonder if, I mean, we consolidated the committees, so I don't need to create another one. You don't need to unconsolidate them, but I just wonder if they're looking, you know, 10 years, 20 years down the line, if we can set the next, or future council up for, for success. I, I just wonder if policy, if we should really look at this commission in the future as playing what its statutory role, the requirement is, which is the Zoning Board of Appeals function of it, if it should really focus in on that? And if there's somewhere else where the, you know, dreaming about what could be, unburdened by what has been, if we can do that somewhere, somewhere else where we have those dreamers? So I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Sufferden, followed by Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to pick up on the, on the discussion about the role of the Land Use Commission in this process. So when they begin to consider this, what will they be looking at? Will they be looking at a draft plan that we can all see at that point? Or are they being asked to provide their input along with everyone else from whom your team has received input?
It's the first. They'll be looking at a actual draft document, which is the comprehensive plan. They'll also be receiving any input that has been received as part of the release of that draft ahead of their legislative process. So as part of the town hall discussions, we will be collecting feedback and categorizing that for their consideration.
And this land use process will start, you might have answered it while I was halfway through writing down, down the question, so.
Yeah, this fall and we'll solidify, yeah. We're going to solidify the schedule with the Land Use Commission on Wednesday. So I don't want to commit to anything specific until that conversation.
Thank you for repeating that. I also want to ask about the extent to which our climate action I also want to ask about, uh, the extent to which our climate action, uh, CARP goals have been integrated into this process. There's been some kind of feedback, uh, from some, uh, of the advocates for CARP that, uh, we are not doing enough. Uh, I feel like council was very clear when we gave staff direction that we wanted to make sure we were doing this. So if you could speak to that, please.
Absolutely. So one of the roles of the consultant team is to review existing planning documents that the city council has adopted and placed on file, one of which is the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. So they've gone through those plans. They've noted policy statements, goals within those documents, and they've actually had them placed within the draft, or that is the intent to place them within the draft. So they are using and the existing planning that the city has done as the foundation for the recommendations of this plan in addition to the community input that we have sought and received throughout the process.
So when this draft comes out, anybody who's interested can review this draft and see if their concerns have been adequately addressed. Whether or not that's the case, they'll, they're free to engage further in the public, in the public process.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Uh, and then one last question about the, the questionnaire. This is a, a new questionnaire that is different than the one from three or four months ago.
Yes.
Five months ago, whatever it was.
So the questionnaire that was released last Thursday, it was in the city's e-newsletter. We also sent that out to folks that have signed up to receive Envision Evanston 2045 updates. Um, we also included it in the announcement, um, for the six and seven joint board meeting, and would be happy to work with all of you to get that in a newsletter as well. Um, just to spread the word on it. Um, it's a new questionnaire. It includes similar questions that were asked at the focus group sessions. Uh, we received some feedback that this was such a great, you know, opportunity to dive deep into these topic areas and the questionnaire asks the same questions. And like I said, you deserve an award if you take the time to fill out all of the questions because it's, it's, it's robust.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Safford and followed by Harris.
Yeah. So Liz, maybe you won't know the answer to this until after Wednesday, but, um, for, and without commenting on the merit of people's complaints about the process so far, once there's a completed draft or, you know, whatever we're going to call a substantially completed draft, how long will that be available for public review, uh, before the council votes on it?
I think that depends on the schedule that's put in place by the Land Use Commission, but I would anticipate it will be a couple of months at a minimum.
Okay. And then there will be chance for further engagement after there's something out there for people to see. Because I think there are a lot of people who were involved on the beginning, have been living their lives, um, and maybe surprised or pleasantly or otherwise about what makes it into the final draft. So what you're saying is there will be at some point for people who want to be engaged in this, but not necessarily play every inning, there, it will be out there, uh, for review by the public.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Um, many of my fellow council members have asked the questions, but I wanted to say thank you, um, for following through with what we talked about, wanting to have these really robust conversations and make sure that everybody was invited to the table. We know everyone doesn't come, whether they're invited or not, but that we set up ability and, and bringing the table to them, right? That's what equity is. Not saying come to my table, but here's the table. Where do you want to eat and how do we work together? So I've seen that. I've had my, um, community members appreciate that. They've come to meetings. So, um, many of the questions have been answered, but we had a very deep conversation and I was very clear about we need to talk to everybody and anybody where they're comfortable and where we get the real information. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. And I just want to say I'm standing before you today, but there is a huge team behind me and, um, I just want to thank them all for their contributions and support throughout this process because this is not a one-person effort. It takes a large team. And so I just want to say thank you to the best team that I've ever had to work with.
Okay. Thank you, team.
Thank you so much. Again, really appreciate it. Um, I've, I've seen up close just the volume and quality of work that's gone in so far. None of us has any illusions about how much work remains ahead. Um, but, um, number one, thank you, not just to you, but to the whole team. Number two, uh, I want to reiterate that you have, uh, a lot of support up here of people who are excited to help bring this across the finish line. So, uh, we asked a lot of important questions about what you all have to do between now and then, but know that you can call on us, uh, to facilitate that, whether that's just private conversations about substance, whether it's reaching out to the community to continue to get good input and feedback. Uh, whether it's, you know, relying on our, our, whatever technical expertise we bring, uh, we're here to, to make sure this is done, uh, and done in a timely fashion and done right. So thank you again.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there a motion on item SP3?
I'll move item SP3, presentation and discussion of the fiscal year 2024 or 2024 mid-year financials.
Councilmember Reed moves that we discuss the FY 2024 mid-year financials. Councilmember Harris seconds. Uh, I believe we have a presentation on its way.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, City Clerk Clayton Black, Budget Manager. Uh, so here tonight to present on the mid-year financials for 2024. Um, those of you on the Finance and Budget Committee, this is going to feel very familiar. Um, it largely mirrors what we gave to, uh, that committee a couple of weeks ago. Actually, just last week. Um, we have made a couple of changes to the content based on the feedback and direction that we did receive at that meeting. So the numbers are a little refreshed from that, uh, just based on the conversation at that meeting. So this is a summary of our mid-year financials through June. Um, we are sitting here in September, but our financials that we're presenting today are through the end of June. Um, we do have some more recent ones on our website. Um, however, June is a good midway point of the year, so it's always easy to kind of project from there and add 50% to get an idea of where we project to finish by the end of the year. Um, in terms of revenue, we were right at 51% as of June 30, June 30th, uh, with 1.2 million in of that being from the Ryan Field permit revenue. Uh, in July and August, we received a lot of permit revenue from that project, uh, and in total have received 10.8 million in permit revenue related to that project. Uh, that was not budgeted. And so it's, it's new revenue to the general fund. Um, at Finance and Budget Committee, the committee directed us to leave that money in the general fund, uh, to help address future, uh, challenges that the general fund may face. And so we've updated the remainder of the presentation with that understanding that permit revenue from this project would stay in the general fund. In terms of expenses, they were at 48% of budget through June. Um, a big portion of that, 2.7 million, uh, was the unbudgeted purchase of the Little Beans property. Um, really that's the only large unbudgeted expense that we've made this year, um, which, uh, you know, last year at this point, we had made several, uh, adjustments to adjust for collective bargaining agreements and some capital projects coming in over budget, but this is really the one thing that's been unbudgeted so far this year. Um, so that was a net loss of 1 million, um, leaving us with a fund balance of 48 million. So we're still sitting with that really healthy fund balance. Um, it was 33% of budgeted expenses. At the same time last year, though, um, our fund balance was sitting at 48, at 40% of budgeted expenses. So that decreased from 40% to 33%, uh, largely the result of increased expenses overall, uh, as well as the 8.7 million deficit that we had, uh, in 2023. Looking now at some specific revenues, um, no slowdown in economy-based revenues. These remain surprisingly strong this year. Sales taxes, home rule sales taxes, income taxes, all at or above their levels from last year. Uh, sales tax 4.7% above, home rule sales taxes 4.2% above. We do receive these three months in the rear, so this is, uh, through May. Um, doing really, really well. So February and March 24 were 7% higher than February and March 23. April and May of 24 were just about 2% higher than April and May of 2024. So we have seen, you know, the last couple of months of receipts have dropped off a bit from the early part of the year. Curious to see if that trend continues and if we start to see these level out, um, but at least to date, uh, doing really, really well. Um, income taxes up 9%. Uh, one item of concern, uh, that we do want to bring to attention now, but not necessarily action until, uh, 2025. Uh, the state of Illinois, uh, has, uh, opted to eliminate the state grocery tax. Um, this is part of our sales tax revenue. That'll take effect on January 1st, 2026, uh, unless the city council takes action to adopt a local tax by October 1st, 2025. It's approximately $2.4 million in potential lost general fund revenues that we'd be looking at, uh, as part of our 2026 budget. Uh, another revenue that we talk a lot about, personal property replacement taxes, uh, PPRT down 42% compared to 2023 through this same time. Um, pretty substantial decreases here, and these are expected to continue throughout '24 and 2025. Um, this is part of our public safety pension policy and something that, um, our policy, uh, allocates PPRT towards our pension funds. And so certainly when this goes down, it's a larger portion, as long as we fund the 100% that the city, uh, has to identify other means to, to cover. And there's an explanation for the reason, uh, for these decreases on Idoor's website explaining further. And one additional one that's way down, uh, real estate transfer taxes, down 31% compared to 2023 actuals, uh, through June, down 41% compared to 2022. Um, the first 1 million this year has been deposited in the Reparation Fund, uh, per direction from the council. And everything after that at this point, uh, is going to the general fund. Uh, you can see, uh, the green line is this year. The blue line is FY 21, the red line is FY 22. And you can see in July and in November of 2021, one really big property sale can take real estate transfer taxes and send it up a million plus dollars. Uh, we just haven't had that really since July of '22 was kind of the last big property sale. You can see a big one in December of 2022 as well. Um, but it's been pretty flat since then, largely due to, uh, interest rates that, that folks are, are up against. Uh, and then here's a summary of some other items within the general fund. So as we already talked about, building permits exceeding budget due to Ryan Field. Um, amusement taxes and athletic taxes, in particular athletic taxes, may finish a bit under budget, given the smaller lakefront stadium. Uh, but we have done some digging into this. The sellout capacity, higher tickets at the lakefront stadium may not result in the full loss of the 600 and some thousand that we budget for athletic taxes. Um, I think the first two games have been sellouts. Uh, and ticket prices are quite high. So we, we don't have enough information to completely project this revenue, but it seems like the losses may not be too, too terrible. Uh, other local revenues on pace to meet or exceed budget, recreation program fees, ticket fees, uh, ticket fines and ambulance fees. Uh, we have a handful that are trending below budget as well, including use tax, uh, telecom taxes. These are, uh, continue to be in the decline. One additional point in the general fund that is really, uh, kind of unfortunate, but helping, uh, cover a good portion of our budgeted deficit is our vacancy rate. Uh, we budgeted a 4% vacancy rate last year, which would have been 3.7 million in savings. We're actually sitting around, uh, finishing the year at 8% at this point. Uh, so that would double the savings, uh, from the staff vacancies to 7.4 million. Certainly not how we want to, to save, uh, through staff vacancies, but as a result, um, our general fund stands to, to benefit from that. And then, as I already said, the only major unbudgeted expense so far has been the Little Beans purchase. Um, this presentation is in your packet. I know the numbers are small. Um, but essentially this shows our budgeted revenues, our low projection for revenues and our high projection for revenues. Uh, where you see green, we expect that revenue to finish over budget. Where you see red, we expect that revenue to finish under budget. And in the couple of places where you see double green, we expect it to finish well over budget. And again, things like use tax, uh, real estate transfer tax, uh, and PPRT are almost certain to finish, uh, at less than what we budgeted them at this year. The biggest jump here is obviously building permits, as we talked about. We didn't budget those revenues from the Ryan Field project, uh, so that is likely to finish 11 million to, um, 12 million over, over what we budgeted because of those, those revenues. Um, so ultimately we expect revenues with the Ryan Field permit revenue to finish, uh, between 9.6 million and 15 million over what we budgeted. So that goes a long way towards the budgeted deficit this year. This table sort of pulls it all together and takes into account the revenue projections, uh, the expense projections, um, the higher than budgeted vacancy rate and the purchase of Little Beans and shows where we expect to finish the year, along with the Northwestern permit revenue from the Ryan Field. Um, so we had a budgeted deficit of 10.5 million with the higher than budgeted revenues, some slight adjustments in reviewing the expenses, the unbudgeted purchase of Little Beans and the higher staff vacancy savings. We do expect to finish with either a really small deficit, uh, and as, and as well as a, uh, at the high end, a $6.5 million surplus. So certainly if you strip that $11 million out, this one-time permit revenue from Ryan Field, we're looking at a, at a deficit situation, not near, not quite as bad as the 10 million that we budgeted. Um, but really because of that one-time permit revenue, we're likely to finish the year with a, a six and a half million, uh, or at least some, some sort of surplus in the general fund. Um, and then we flagged two additional things that we are going to talk about with the Finance and Budget Committee later this year. One is transferring to the, uh, Equipment Replacement Fund, a portion of the general fund reserves to pay for the uh, fire truck that was discussed earlier this year, the, the ladder truck. Idea being, um, do this transfer this year in lieu of bonds, and so we'll certainly have that conversation with them. Uh, and then transferring a million dollars to Special Assessment Fund. Uh, Laura can talk more about this. Uh, we plan on talking more about it with Finance and Budget Committee, but essentially a long list of, of homeowners, uh, and petitions for alley improvements. And so um, we're, there's a big backlog of, of those petitions outstanding. And so this would go a long way to start making some progress on that. So those are two items we'd like to consider as unbudgeted expenses here towards the end of the year. Uh, several big items. So budget is well underway and will be coming to you soon. Um, presentation scheduled in October. Um, these are some of the big topics that we are, are working through as we work to finalize the budget proposal. Um, as you know, we were working with a budgeted, at least signed deficit of about $10 million last year. You know, that's, that assumed a 4% vacancy rate, that assumed that revenues were still a little bit conservative. Um, but that was kind of the baseline of what we're working with. And if we're fully staffed, that deficit is certainly something that would come to fruition. Um, there are a handful of funds that have very significant capital needs and no dedicated revenue other than user fees and transfers from the general fund. Uh, we're going to be talking about a lot of these tomorrow night with the Finance and Budget Committee. One is the parking fund. We've identified a lot of capital needs. Uh, the only revenue there are parking fees. And so um, to the extent that we can use, um, parking fees to, to cover those needs. Another one is water. We've talked a lot about lead service and other capital needs in our water fund. We have a presentation scheduled for tomorrow night to go into greater detail on that. Uh, and then vehicles, certainly more demand for electric vehicles. Uh, upfront cost is higher than, than gas-powered vehicles. Um, the only revenue for this fund is transfers from the general fund and other funds. So if we want to ramp up spending on vehicles, um, it comes at a cost to the general fund and, and our other funds that are already, um, facing, facing their own challenges. In the CIP, we have park needs, uh, facilities. We're well aware of those needs in special assessment as well. Um, all of those priorities, no dedicated revenue other than user fees, transfers from the general fund and bonds. So a long list of challenges that we'll confront, uh, again, as we present budget next month. Already talked, uh, public safety pensions. So this is another big item. Um, an increase in the transfer from general fund from 5.6 million last year to 9.6 million, uh, as part of our 2025 budget. So when we adopted our uh, initial policy for public safety pensions, funding at 100%, the annual contribution was about 20 million. Um, this year it was, uh, about 25 million. And next year's budget, in order to meet that 100% need, we're looking at $29.6 million in contributions. So certainly a big challenge to continue to, to meet that, uh, but we'll, we'll, uh, address that more as we get closer to budget. Already talked about the Ryan Field permit revenues, the Good Neighbor Fund, uh, the $3 million contribution from Northwestern. Uh, 1.5 million of that already allocated to sustainability and affordable housing, and you'll see that in this year's budget as well. Uh, as well as 1.5 million that's unallocated. Last year this was used to help, uh, shrink the deficit in the general fund. Um, so that's unallocated, uh, at least as of now. And already talked about, a bit about the grocery tax, uh, not a challenge that we'll talk about this fall necessarily, um, but something we want to keep our eye on, uh, next year. Won't go through detail on this, but this is just our fund balances as of June 30th. It's in our monthly report. More importantly, our, um, equally as important to our fund balance, our funds that have fund balance policies that are set by city council. Um, so this is included in your packet and it shows within each of our funds, how much excess and, and deficit many of our funds have as of June. Only two here with deficits as of the end of June, that was CIP and Water. And we, of course, issued the bonds in July, and so those are reflected in our financials now. Uh, so CIP and, uh, Water Fund now no longer in a, in a fund balance deficit. With that, happy to answer any questions you might have, um, regarding mid-year financials.
Thank you so much. It was very helpful. Councilmember Reed followed by Newsma.
Thank you. I, I just first, it's unfortunate that Mr. Friedman isn't here now, but maybe he's watching online or he'll watch the meeting back. But I, I, I want to remind, it was brought up, I want to remind residents that there is a Finance and Budget Committee and that we're talking about the budget year round. Um, and focused on it. And, uh, I think it's been one of the greatest achieved one of the greatest achievements of this council to implement that committee. So I encourage folks to participate. I want to start with, I'll actually, since you just mentioned it, with the grocery tax. I think this is something that our lobbyists should, like, we should assign our lobbyists to be meeting with our state representatives and legislators to address this. I think, one, I agree with the policy. In fact, I think I've made it very clear, I wouldn't even support Evanston implementing a grocery tax. And so I agree with the policy, but I do think that the state has to make sure that as they're moving forward with that progressive policy, which I think a lot of us agree with, that we're making cities whole. And so I think, you know, if we can have our lobbyists and maybe the Illinois Municipal League kind of go after the state to create a PPRT-like structure for the grocery tax, I think that would be useful. So I'll put that out there. I do want to note that we have, it was noted here, it may not have been noted here, but it was certainly noted at Finance and Budget, that the Parking Fund makes a transfer to the General Fund every year. And so I just want to put that out there because we had a conversation previously, or at our last meeting about parking. And I just want to make it clear that our Parking Fund supports the General Fund, and we can do more to get revenue from our Parking Fund to support our General Fund and operations across the city. And so I really think that parking is one of the most, it's one of the greatest subsidies that we give to residents, and it's a greater subsidy that we give to residents than we give them for housing. And, you know, that, I think, cuts against our CARP goals, that cuts against our health and human services goals of having a more active, healthy community. And so we really need to start looking at parking as a progressive source of revenue, particularly if we're going to take those funds and apply them toward a healthier, more affordable Evanston. The... I just have a question about the six. So you said there's potential that we could end the year with a six-point-five million dollar surplus. And if we had taken out the Northwestern money, we would have potentially ended the year with a, what, three- or four-million-dollar deficit? I think that goes to, you know, we've, for years and years, you know, and good on you all, but we get this report that the sky is falling, and maybe it slowly is falling, but it just seems like... I've just been concerned that we've been over-conservative with our estimates here, and we have a budget excess reserve of, what is it sitting at now? Forty?
The...
The excess reserve fund, the general fund?
There's six-point-nine million per the audit that's excess reserves at this point, six-point-nine million.
That couldn't be right.
So this is the breakdown.
For just this, are you saying for, what are you saying?
So we currently have a fund balance of forty-eight million dollars in the general fund.
Right.
Of that, and this is as of June, these numbers have changed a little bit as of July, so I'm just referencing from here. There's a four-point-four million dollar advance from the general fund to the CIP fund included in there. There's twelve-point-eight million of that fund balance that is assigned, so ten million of that is assigned to the deficit for this year. Now, we know that technically we won't finish with a deficit this year now, so you can consider that unassigned if you would like. It's just, throughout the year, the auditors consider that as a part of the assigned fund balance, leaving thirty-point-eight million is unassigned. And so the required fund balance is twenty-three-point-nine million, leaving six-point-nine million that's excess and above that. Now, if you take that six-point-nine and add that ten million back to it, you're probably sitting around like sixteen-point-nine million in excess reserves, in excess, above and beyond.
Our reserve policy.
Reserve policy.
Okay. But if you factor in our reserve policy, we're sitting at close to...
The total is, the total, the total unassigned fund balance is thirty-point, thirty-point-eight million, but of the thirty-point-eight, twenty-three-point, I can't see the numbers, twenty-three-point-nine of that is the required fund balance.
No, yeah, but set by our own policy. But I get that. And so we have the excess of, okay.
Right.
My point being is that this is, you know, let's just go with the excess. This is six million dollars of our community's money that is sitting in our coffers and really sitting in, you know, allowing banks to do what banks do instead of that circulating in our community. And I just really caution us against sucking that much money out of the community and holding on to it when it could be circulating, going to our small businesses and, you know, making housing more affordable for folks. So there's, I think we just really have to be cautious, and that's why I'm really concerned about sometimes when we're too conservative. We've had this fund balance for those of us who have been here the whole term. It's been sitting at this number. This is a big topic, if I can get like thirty more seconds. But we've been sitting at this thirty-million-dollar mark pretty much our whole term. And it's really important that we, that we don't hoard money. Last thing I want to get to is with the ten-point-eight million dollars, there's a couple of things, but I'll just leave with this last thing here, is with the money that we received from Northwestern, Finance and Budget on the committee, we agreed that we think it should go into our general fund, toward our general fund balance. I think we really need to make sure that this year we also do not increase property taxes. And I think this money gives us the flexibility to go at least another year and to really get creative this year and next year about new sources of revenue that do not make, that do not increase the cost of housing and that more directly target other areas that can shift the burden, not just, and not have the burden be borne just by Evanston residents, but have it borne by a wider range of folks. And so I will close there. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Picking up on Councilmember Reed's line of reasoning, I just want to call everyone's attention to the long-term projections of our deficit continuing to increase, right? And so while we may have dodged a bullet this year thanks to the unbudgeted revenue from the permit fees, that's not something, I sure as heck hope they don't build a new stadium every year, because ten million dollars from unbudgeted is not going to drop into our lap every year. But the other point I wanted to make was that with regards to the savings and, because the vacancy rate is higher, I just want to caution us about overstating that benefit. You know, while it's true, we might be saving an additional three-point-seven million dollars in employee salary benefits, at least a portion of that is going to be offset by having to hire consultants outside to do that work, which they would have done had we had them on staff. So I just want to make that caveat there. It's probably too difficult in the heat of the moment, and maybe not even worth it to dig down into that further for additional discussion. But, you know, the savings in employee salaries and benefits is not everything that it seems to be, looking at that one number.
I would just add to that and say, we're not seeing the deficit we budgeted this year because of three things. The Northwestern permit revenue, higher-than-budgeted staff vacancy rates at eight percent, which we, as an organization, I don't think want to see that three-point-seven million in savings. So if we close that gap down to even just four percent, that's three-point-seven million we'd be spending. And then finally, revenues are still at all-time highs, and historically, they don't stay at all-time highs forever. Eventually, they go there and then they go down. And so we've just seen them surge for three years. History tells us that's not how it's always going to be. At some point, they're going to level off. We'll see that recession that people have been talking about for like two or three years now, it seems. But because of those three things, yeah, we're going to land the plane pretty good this year. But if revenues do drop, we hire the positions we need to fill, and no more football stadiums, then the deficit we do talk about is a real thing that could come to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the work, the clarity of the presentation. And I know we're, I know it's a busy time for you guys, and we'll be in a lot of discussion in the coming weeks and months. So thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
This brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda this evening?
M1?
M1?
A6.
What?
A6.
So we have M1, A6, and A9?
CC1, 2, and 3.
CC1, CC2, CC3?
I'm sorry, what is M1?
There's a technical issue with the minutes.
Yep.
What's that? Apparently, oh, right, PD1 is interaction. Yes, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, A6.
All right. So this time I have M1, A6, A9, PD1, CC1, CC2, CC3. Any further removals?
I will move the consent agenda minus items, minus items, M1, A6, A9, PD1, and then the CCs.
Councilmember Reed moves adoption of the consent agenda, except for the following items. M1, A6, A9, PD1, CC1, CC2, CC3. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Seeing no discussion with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contention agenda with the seven items previously named is adopted. Clerk Mendoza, are you requesting that we simply skip the minutes for...
Yeah, if you could table them, there's like an issue with the software. The minutes are like internally correct, but when you print the PDF, it doesn't show the minutes as they should show. So...
I'll move to table item M1 until next time.
Second, Councilmember Nusma moves to table the item M1 until the September 23rd meeting. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the item will be tabled until the September 23rd City Council meeting. Now on item A6, Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move item A6, Contract Award with Boulder Contractors for the 2024 Lead Service Line Private Side Replacement Pilot Project, bid number 2430.
Second. Councilmember Kelly moves approval of the contract award. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Councilmember Reed, followed by Sufferton.
Thank you. So we had quite a bit of discussion about this in APW. So I don't want to rehash, and I think most of my colleagues were here for that. So the one question that I have that popped up between then is, can you refresh my memory on, I believe it's state law, that requires municipalities to go with the lowest responsible bidder? This is for Councilor.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed. Yes, that's correct. So the city undergoes a bid process wherein which we have a ranking and criteria that each bid proposal has to meet to be a responsible bid. We go through that, and then once everyone is marked as a responsible bidder, then we go with the lowest bid possible. So during this process, based on the Business Enterprise Program goals, the lowest bid was deemed not responsive. And so then we moved on to the second lowest, which is what brings us to the Boulder contract tonight. And I did want to clarify something that came up at APW. Staff went back and looked at the bid proposal that went out to everyone when the city initially looked for bids. And the DCEO grant agreement is actually attached to the bid proposal as Exhibit B. There's also a DCEO BEP, the Business Enterprise Program Utilization Plan, and there's a DCEO Approved BEP subcontractors. There's a link, and you can go in through the DCEO, and they have a full list of BEP-approved subcontractors for the contractors to utilize. Additionally, in the bid project, it does specify that the city must comply with the BEP goals, and not doing so would be a material breach of the grant agreement, which may lead to termination of the grant. So I just want to clarify that because those were some questions that had come up.
Thank you for that. I pulled this off, and I know there were some lights came on. I appreciate the offer that was put forward, and I hope that we can work with you all in some capacity in the future. But I think it's the responsible thing for this council not to table this, not to hold this, and to move forward and make sure that our residents are getting clean drinking water, safe drinking water. It's clean, but safe and lead-free drinking water is as soon as possible. So thank you.
Councilmember Sufferton, followed by Burns.
Yeah. So I guess it's a question for everyone up here. I don't want to rehash the conversation. But why wouldn't we ask the question of DCEO that they asked us to ask? It seems like there won't be a material delay. It would allow us to use the lowest bidder to provide the same service. I don't believe in holding things, to hold them, but it seems like a pretty straightforward request that we ask a direct question of DCEO.
Members of council, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. So when senior project manager Paul Mayano received the bids and was reviewing them, of course, he wants to be financially responsible with the city's resources, so he actually did reach out to DCEO and have a conversation, followed up with an email, that exact question specifically about the apparent low bidder not meeting the BEP goals, and would it impact our, actually what he asked is, are you sure you don't want us to award to the apparent low bidder and DCEO? It's very clear that it would impact our grant.
Okay. So there is a written record of that request and that answer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
I think what, so coming into this meeting, what wasn't clear to me, and I just heard something that's confused things even further, but I'll answer that in a second. But what wasn't clear to me is that at some point in the process, we said very clearly no to a waiver. Because the first time I read this email, in the body of the email, it's, there's a response that's pulled out directly from the addendum. Even when I first read it, it didn't, I didn't feel as though it was saying that someone could not provide a waiver. I'm going to read this. "This project has an overall BEP goal of twenty-eight percent with eighteen percent of grant dollars going to MBEs and ten percent going to WBs. Will Evanston accept a waiver if the goals are not possible to meet?" So the response is no, period. And then it goes immediately into this. "If goals cannot be met, clear documentation of good faith efforts should be provided, including copies of bid solicitations, how bid solicitations were made known to BEP vendors, proof of additional repeated outreach to BEP vendors, phone and email logs." Why would you have someone go through all of that if the answer is just a simple no, unless there's some reason why you're requesting that information, which is why I'm saying just a simple sentence to thread both of those things together to say, if none of the contractors, which is what we heard earlier, are compliant with the BEP goals, then, and then it ties perfectly in, clear documentation of good faith efforts should be, et cetera. And so really, my comments tonight are not about whether or not we should award the grant to Joe Kennedy. I support minority contracting and, you know, what it's meant to do. I will say this was somewhat attractive because for those, and I didn't say this in... say this in APW, but for those who are familiar with the L A P program, it is mostly, if not entirely, potentially minority residents who work in Evanston, who are, you know, typically car care and union members. So we're talking about, we're still talking about minorities benefiting from a project in Evanston. Just one is, well, not necessarily in Evanston. One again is contractors who work out, who are headquartered out of Evanston. That's what's in the voter contract. And then what Joe Kennedy proposes, an alternative would hire minority workers that live in Evanston currently. So I just, I didn't make that clear in APW, but I want to make that clear. I'm not saying, oh, well, you know, minority contracting is important. Absolutely. I would still take hiring an Evanston resident for actually Evanston residents to do a project in Evanston over a contractor in another place. I believe in the program, but I just want you to understand, like, why I even thought it was worth considering this is because we're talking about actual Evanston residents who would benefit from this project. But again, I think as long as it was clear to them that no, we're not accepting waivers, I would have no issue with it. I don't think it was clear enough. And I'm not trying to, you know, point the fingers or criticize anyone. I'm simply saying as a teammate in what is the corporation of the city of Evanston that next time we should do, you know, we should try to be more clear than we were in this so that we're providing, you know, clear guidance for contractors bidding on these types of projects. The only question I have though, because I thought I understood this and then Councilor Ruggie, something you said threw me off a bit, was, is there any language in the bid package that mentions a waiver? Yeah, that's the question.
And I might ask Paul Moyano to speak to that. The document I'm looking at is 219 pages. So.
Oh, yeah. Which is why I was like, I told, I think, you know, the report of that is like, to put one sentence in, like, you know, none of this is, is brevity is not a part of any bid package. And so that's why it's important to be detailed because everything else we do in these big packages is incredibly detailed. These are, as you said, 200 pages long. And so that's why that one, one little sentence or two, I think, would have been helpful. But sorry, Paul, go ahead.
No, and I'm afraid I, I'm not sure if the word waiver is mentioned or where it's mentioned or how it would be mentioned in the documentation. What we relied on was the addendum where we responded that no waiver would be allowed.
Okay. That's all I have. Again, I, that's really all I would like to get out of this at this point. I don't think it makes sense at this point to, you know, to rebid it, but I just want to make sure moving clear forward that we're being as clear as we can in these bid packages. That's all I should think.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. I guess I would, I feel like the whole council should just hear a little bit from the folks that are concerned that it was not clear in the bid, the bid package.
Again, I'm Ryan Kennedy, so kind of shocking. So it, in our mind, is in the bid package. It's very clear that there are waiver requests, that there is a process that you go through when you're submitting a waiver. This is a seven page document, guidance for documenting good faith efforts to meet B E P participation goals. There's one summary sentence, which I'll just read quickly. In order to show that it has made good faith efforts to meet the B E P participation goal on a contract, the bidder offer must either one, meet the B E P goal and document its commitments for participation of B E P firms, or two, when it does not meet the goal, document its good faith efforts to try to meet the goal. It explains in, I think, seven or eight pages exactly what you have to do, which is, in our opinion, what we did do. I believe, and Leni can speak to this further, B E P grant through the D C E O is outlined in state code, state law. And I believe you have to have good faith waivers. It has to be a part of the program. You can't make them requirements. That's why they're called goals. So there always, I think legally has to be a waiver process. Otherwise, I don't believe you're allowed to like enact these requirements, right? That's, I think it's like, it's an aspirational goal. I would simply ask that the process here be reviewed. I mean, I don't understand exactly the point. If there was never to be a goal, why are all these, you know, what are these forms for? And I wish we would have known that in advance, right? It's just extremely confusing to say that the state code exists, the guidance forms exist, all this stuff exists, but Evanston or whoever, D C E O won't even accept the waiver. I just, it's really, really confusing. And it basically makes our bid worthless because we didn't know that and no one told us that.
Okay.
And just that point, so the statute does have the section regarding the waiver. And it's actually the section of the statute that the Corporation Council mentioned in the letter that we got about an hour before the committee meeting.
At 3:49 PM, this is from Corporation Council, 30 ILCS only allows vendors such as us to seek waivers and they must do so directly to the state council. So I guess I would like clarification on what does that mean? We submitted a bid package with a waiver request at the time of the bid, which is how we thought we were supposed to do. Not really supposed to do after the bid, et cetera. How are we supposed to must do so directly to the state council?
And if that's the process, that's according to the state statute.
Right. No, I understand. I guess I would like to see the written communications from the D C E O, you know, and I'm not really comfortable at this point. It's several hundred thousand dollar difference. So I don't know, can this be, can this be held or should that be tabled?
Either.
I mean, I would at least like to see those communications from the D C E O and, you know, to fill. But I also think that there was a lack of clarity. It sounds like from, you know, I've been at a chance to read through the whole bid package, but clearly it wasn't clear. And that concerns me, especially when we're talking about saving several hundred thousand potential dollars.
One of the things that did come up, if I may, just one, one point.
Well, hold on. So Councilmember Kelly, you have the floor. Do you want?
Yeah, so, no, go ahead.
One of the things that just came up regarding the grant agreement, there was, I actually just, I went through and read the grant agreement and I did a word search through the grant agreement. And what was mentioned at the committee meeting was that in the event that the, that this particular bid goes, goes to, to the lowest bidder, that the city would lose $280,000. I went through the grant agreement and I did not see that anywhere. I did a search of 280,000. I did a search of the dollar sign. It's about 55 pages and actually read the entire agreement. So it's not in the grant agreement that the city would lose it. And so to, to, to Joe Kennedy Construction's point, given all of these facts and the statute, it's probably in the best interest to rebid it so that there isn't any question about it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're already rehashing what went on at APW, but I'm going to do something new, which was informative to me earlier today. What I'm going to do is read from some email correspondence between city staff and D C E O that, to me, answered the question. And also assured me that staff was, you know, anticipating these questions and, you know, taking the appropriate actions to ask them in advance. So this is a, an email from Paul Moyano, city, who's the city engineer right back there, to the D C E O Office of Grants Management. And on September 3rd, he said, hello, Zach, as we discussed, we have four bidders on the lead service line replacement project, as summarized in the table below. The lowest bidder is seeking a B E P waiver. Can you please provide feedback on the waiver request? Also, what is D C E O's position on the responsiveness of the lowest bidder in light of the B E P participation? And so a gentleman named Zach Wickman from the Office of Grants Management replied to that email like 20 minutes later and said, hello, hi, Paul, we believe that the lowest responsible bidder is the one that complies with the B E P law. That B E P law does include a provision for a good faith effort waiver request, but I can tell you that they are very difficult to achieve. In your location, for this grant scope of work, and with the knowledge that you have B E P options, presumably referring to the two bids that were fully compliant with that requirement, I do not believe a G F E, good faith effort waiver request would be successful. But as you're right, as the grantee to try, should you seek a good faith effort waiver and not be successful, you could lose that portion of this grant required to be spent with B E P vendors, $280,000 in this case. Fairly clear. It's, it's clear to me that even if a waiver could be requested, financially, we would come out behind. And, and even if we could go to the lowest bidder in this case, financially, we would come out behind because we would be reducing the grant by more than the amount of money we'd be saving by going with the lowest bidder. So I think staff has been totally on top of this. Could it have been more clear in the language of the RFP? Perhaps. I haven't reviewed that language myself. So if there's one takeaway from this discussion, let's be clear about what goes into the RFP. But based on the correspondence that our staff has had with D C E O, I think we have fully, you know, satisfied ourselves as to the, as the D C E O's position on this. And I think, to me, it makes sense that we accept staff's recommendation here. So I'm ready to move forward.
At this time, there is nobody requesting to speak for a first time. So we go back to a second opportunity for Councilmember Reed with three minutes and 45 seconds left.
I'm just going to contradict maybe everything I've said thus far. Just to give a fair argument, what I think maybe is the strongest argument on the other side. The difference between if we lose the $280,000 and what their bid is, is what, $90,000? Something like that? So is $90,000 worth giving, right, the state obviously has an interest in supporting minority and women owned businesses anywhere in the state. That's their, I mean, they are the state.
Just point of information, $90,000, what do you mean by that? I just want to.
Is that not the difference between if we were to lose the 280,000?
It's 280 minus 190, 190 being the difference between the two bits.
Between Boulder and Joe Kennedy, yeah.
I'm sorry, 190.
97 or something like that, yeah.
No, you got it right. You're saying, what Councilmember Reed is, I believe, saying is, if it were possible, and I'm not going to weigh in on whether it is, if it were possible to go with the lowest bidder, get 280,000 less from the state, well, we're saving about 190 by going with the lowest bidder. So on net, we're out about 90.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. So net would be out about 90,000, right? Okay. So is $90,000 worth, and assuming you all meet your goals, is it worth having an Evanston preference?
I don't think we can.
And, but we can, because we'll just lose the 280. Their bid is lower. So it's just $90,000 difference. And then we get to hire folks from Evanston and support, I don't know if you live in, at least the lawyer lives in Evanston, I don't know if, but we get to support Evanstonians. So that is part of the question, is $90,000 worth, I don't know, five, or however many jobs you all said you'd create here in Evanston?
Point of clarity, don't we lose the whole bid?
No, no, no. From everything that was just said, we just lose the $280,000. So it's not the whole bid.
Sir, if, I, my, I'll have to go back and double check and maybe Laura can help me out. But if we're granted the waiver, we lose the $280,000. There's no guarantee we're granted the waiver. So if we're not granted the waiver, D C E O is saying it's a material breach of the grant application and we would lose the entire grant.
But, but hold on, didn't Councilmember Nusma just read that we would lose only the portion of the grant that is related to the B P, B E P goals? That's what I thought I just heard you read.
Should you seek a good faith effort waiver and not be successful, you could lose that portion of this grant required to be spent with B E P vendors.
So that portion, which is the 280,000. So not the whole grant, just that portion.
Excuse me, one moment. As a point of clarification, D C E O, generally the state of Illinois are very clear that they do not allow a local hiring preference. So if the city of Evanston negotiates a deal with a contractor where we allow a local hiring preference be substituted for a B E P goal, it is entirely possible that we could jeopardize the entire grant because the state is very clear about that.
Okay, that's helpful. I was just trying to make the best argument I could think of for the other side.
Well, point of information real quick, because I think your question about, because I heard it differently earlier. Is it that if you're, if the waiver is approved, you lose the 290 or is it if it's denied? Because I heard it both ways this evening and I do think that's an important fact.
The email said if the waiver is denied.
If the waiver is denied, we could lose the 280,000.
But if it's approved, we don't lose it. Because I heard something different earlier.
But if, if it is approved.
Yes.
Which was not said earlier, and that's my point.
That's what the email says. If it's approved, then we would get the million dollars, the full amount. If it's not approved, we would get, lose 280,000.
But it's extremely unlikely that it will be approved. So I think your point is right. If it were approved, we would not lose that money. But they're very clearly saying, don't even try because it's not going to be approved. I mean, they're not clearly saying it, but that's what I interpret.
And just to, just to unwind what's going on here, which is helpful, Councilmember Reed still has the floor.
Thank you. And Laura, go ahead.
I was going to say, if no bidders had been able to meet a goal through good faith effort, and then good faith effort matters, but to D C E O, the way they have communicated it is because there were two bidders that were able to meet the B E P goals, then a waiver is not warranted because it can be done.
Thank you. So I'll just close here. One, I, I hear what you're saying about the potential of losing the entire grant, although I feel like that's new information. Certainly the 280 K was mentioned before. So, and of course, there, I'm under no illusion that they would approve the waiver because it's not in their interest, nor does it meet their goals. I also listened to far too many Supreme Court hearings or oral, oral arguments. And as was mentioned earlier by the applicants, it's a goal. And I think under, again, I think it's warped. We're doing reparations. So we're like, Evanston is fully on board with going against some of this stuff. But my understanding is that there's clear case law that you can't require a lot of these race based or gender based contracting requirements. That's why they're goals. So it'd be hard for me to think that it would even be, again, I support these goals. I want to see us do more of it. I wish the Constitution was interpreted differently, but it feels like it would be hard for the state to just take away the grant entirely from us if we went with this goal. Even, and again, I think we'd still be meeting those goals of getting more minority and women and folks, but locally, you know, employed and with opportunity. Again, I'm just making that what I think is the strongest argument in favor of that. I, maybe it is worth taking a little bit of time to look into this. I wasn't there earlier, but as I've pondered it more and as new information has come out, and particularly what Councilmember Nusma read, you know, it's really up to this body to figure out if 90,000 is worth it and really understand, are we at risk of losing the entire grant? Or are we just at risk of losing, again, net $90,000 to hire Evanston residents? So I think that's something we should really consider. Thank you.
Councilmember Hadakatis followed by Harris.
I feel really strongly that we have to follow our process around choosing our bids. We had four folks submit bids, two of them met with the requirements, two did not. Can we be better about being clear in the process? Yes, probably we should look into that. But, you know, this process is set up so that there is not favoritism to people. You know, we don't have another, the other person who would have the unresponsive is not here to, you know, pitch their case either. I really feel like, at least for me, I need to step back and let staff go through this. I know that during the RFP process, it's not the same staff. that during the RFP process, it's not the same staff choosing these projects every time. It's a rotating cast of folks that work at the city from different areas. So there's not, you know, favoritism, or, and so we're trying to be as objective as possible to make the most effective use of our city's money. And so for me, I think we need to go with the, with the recommendation from staff and go forward.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I won't take much time. But I'm, I like to not always just do, I don't do what people tell me to do. I always get in trouble for that, and I'm okay with that. But if we have a process, I'm not willing to lose the whole process on a gamble, thinking, well, maybe if then. As I stated before, I said no. We did provide some documentation, asking them to fill that out. Let's not do that again. We learn, right? We make mistakes. We all make mistakes. Or short sight. Might not even be a mistake, just short-sightedness. From what I heard, we could lose the whole bid, and I'm not willing to do that. I'm not willing to risk $90,000, because Ray lives walking distance from my house. And Ray will knock on my door every day, asking, why do we spend an additional 90 or 280,000? So Ray, you know you will. We have a surplus right now, but we won't have that later, and we know that. And we have to be fiscally sound. We're at a place where this is the opportunity to do that. I appreciate you wanting Evanston residents to do the job, right? That is what we want. That wasn't the requirement. And I feel bad for the gentleman who came and had the opportunities. Hopefully, you'll still grant them opportunities to work for you on projects. I'm not willing to risk to say, we think we're gonna take this other bid. Is that okay? And then they say no, and then we can't do the program and have issues. So that is my stance. Thank you.
This time, again, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. So we go back to Councilmember Burns with 25 seconds left.
We give partial waivers and waivers all the time when it's city funds. And so I just, I want you to understand why this is confusing for, I'm chair of the NWDB committee, so I'm maybe more familiar with kind of how some of this, you know, takes shape, especially in the early parts of these bids. And so it is very common for us, for this body, whether you realize it or not, to approve partial waivers, waivers all the time. And so that's why, in particular, understanding this is different, because there's this other authority whose guidelines and requirements we're trying to understand are involved in this, which is understandable. But that's why it's particularly confusing when the, you know, the guidance isn't, you know, clear in some areas. So I just wanted to make that clear, because I don't think that was obvious. And I just want to add on exactly, you know, the reason why I thought this was important to discuss as much as we have is because we, at this time, do not require that these outside contractors hire Evanston residents. And so it quite literally is not, from a financial standpoint, not benefiting Evanston residents. If we did require that, that'd be great. It's something I think we could look into, but we don't at the moment. And so that's why I thought this was worth considering, because at the end of the day, we represent most directly people who live in Evanston, who are trying to find employment in different job opportunities. But I agree, I don't think this is something that we need to delay further. But I believe it deserved this, this attention from this body. Thank you.
Still on second opportunities, Councilmember Newsma with a minute 50 left. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
Councilmember Rebel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddad?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract is awarded. Now on item A9, Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move item A9, beach pass distribution policy for students of District 65, District 202, and Northwestern University.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of this beach pass distribution policy. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. One, thank you to everyone who's gotten us to this point. I think Councilmember Haddad, as well as others and staff. We're moving in the right direction. I do have a few questions about beach operations. So this whole beach token thing, I don't know who's prepared to answer this, but so the, the understanding was that we spend about $600,000 annually on our lakefront operations. That's including, inclusive of staff, and I presume we have one of those, I've been walking along the Chicago Lakefront a lot recently, I'm sure we have one of those big machines that comes out and rakes the lakefront regularly? Or how do we, what are the operations on the lakefront for?
Sure. Good evening, Audrey Thompson, Director of Parks and Recreation. So there are a couple of things. So lifeguards, as you all can recall, Fire Chief Polup said it's a little bit over 600,000 just for lifeguards. You then do have to factor in gate attendants, all of our staff who are at the beach offices. In addition to that, grading the sand, there's other costs for making sure that the beach is dredged every year, which is, that increases higher and higher every year, depending on the sand and how much we have to move, and what kind of personnel we have to have to move it. So there's a lot more that goes into that, rather than just lifeguards. But just, and so there's guarding the waters, but then we also guard our entry into the beach. So that's personnel for that as well. So those are gate attendants.
So the gate attendants are under Parks and Rec, or are those, are they also lifeguards?
No, they're.
They're not lifeguards?
They're not lifeguards.
Okay, I thought there was like a sharing of cross-training.
That's a totally different expense.
And do you have an idea of what that expense is, gate attendants?
I don't, we don't have, I can get that for you. We don't have the total amount, but that is definitely something that we can get.
Do you know how much they make per hour? 14 per hour? And do you have an estimate of how many gate attendants there are? About 25? And I'm not going to do the math now.
Right, they're not all working at once.
Okay. Yeah, so, I mean, I can imagine, and they're there from, what time?
I mean, they're also there when swimming is not allowed.
Yeah, but they're there, I don't know, what time do they start?
Before.
9:00 AM, 7:00 AM?
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Bis, City Manager Stowe. They are there from about 10:00 AM to about 8:00 PM, depending on our hours of operation.
Okay. So, you know, this is, and you're looking at the summer months, or, and maybe some of the spring, this is quite an expense for the gate attendants. Again, I, I would, I don't know if it's, I wish we had a number, but I don't know if it's worth it to spend that kind, whatever we're spending, likely hundreds of thousands, at least 100,000?
For the gate attendant's salary is probably about between 20 and $30,000, give or take, but I can give you.
For the whole year, for all of them?
The summer, yeah. It's one per beach. You gotta remember, we're doing one per beach. It's not like the lifeguards, where there's six per beach.
I guess I haven't gone to the lakefront, the Evanston Lakefront, in a while. But when I, when we first changed the policy, I remember there being like two or three of them stacked up there. I don't know if that's other folks' experience at many of the entrances. Certainly, I recall, too. Maybe it's the lifeguards who are kind of hanging out with the gate attendant, which maybe that's.
You are probably correct, because there are UCB positions called the Ripper, and that person would rip your ticket. That person was a lifeguard and was expected to respond to emergencies. But because of technology and the e-tickets that we sell, we've eliminated, essentially eliminated that.
Okay, okay. I feel like you're prepared to give something.
If you're looking at how many, how much non-resident revenue was, I ran a report earlier today, it was about $387,000 in non-resident beach token sales and non-resident daily tickets, just to kind of give you an idea. So the, the amount of money coming in is paying for the gate attendant.
And, but we also brought in roughly the same amount through parking fees. So I guess non-residents are covering about $600,000 of our lakefront cost between their parking fees and their, their gate fees. I, I, I just really want to close with this, just urge us, just like we talked about the fountain earlier, and look at the expense we're gonna have to, that was up there earlier, that we're gonna have to spend on, on that. Our lakefront is the same thing, only we didn't have to spend millions of dollars to create it. And we should be utilizing it as the tool that it is to draw people into our city, people from Wommet, from Skokie, from Winnetka, from Chicago, here to Evanston to park on the infrastructure that we created, pay us money, maybe even raise those fees, and maybe even start charging Evanston residents those fees to encourage them to walk to the lakefront and take bikes and meet our CARB goals. But we can make up the difference, as has been shown by the parking fees by non-residents, by, by charging for parking and not for entry to our lakefront. We can save money on the gate attendants. Maybe it's, you know, not much. And then the printing cost of the tokens, whatever that may be, as, but we're moving to more digital. But we can save some money here. We can better utilize our lakefront as an economic tool. And we can just be good neighbors. And I would really encourage us to, to consider this more fully. I know it's not going to happen today or now, but I really hope a future council finally takes the step to make our lakefront available to anyone who wants to access it, and figures out a way through, I mean, Director Thompson and the team have been great at figuring out new things, like the, the law, the chairs and the other stuff. And we're looking at making an investment in the concessions at the Arrington Lagoon. And, you know, I think there's more opportunity to get vendors there, not food trucks. I don't want to concern my colleague from the third ward or from the sixth ward. But I think there's great opportunity here, and I hope we can more fully utilize it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I just wanted to, and I think Director Tom, you're gonna speak to this, to having students with proof of student ID, not an employee, and Evanston residency, that they would then obtain a token, which hasn't been the past practice.
So I do want to clarify some information that was provided, and I asked Tim, who is our Division Manager for the lakefront, to come and add some additional information. So currently, there is no way in our department, through our current recreation software system, to sell a, or to provide a free beach pass to a non-resident. So there is, there's probably some folks who use their Northwestern ID to get onto the beach. That is not the practice. So that is something that, that individuals do, and it will probably be just a few of those individuals. If a Northwestern student obtains or wants to get a free entry into the beach, they still have to get a beach pass. That is how it works. They have to get a beach pass. They cannot simply show their Northwestern ID and then gain entry. Now, does it happen? It does. Just like if an Evanston resident goes to the beach and they forget their beach pass, the gate attendant is not going to sit and argue with them. They show their ID and they get, they can get onto the beach. That is not what happens on a regular basis. So I want to make sure that I provide some clarification that, yes, to get a free beach pass, they do show their Evanston, their Northwestern ID, but they actually have to have a physical beach pass. So I want to make sure that you all understand that. I also want to make sure that we add those individuals, because initially, we only talked about 60203, which is Skevinston. And there are other zip codes who attend District 65 and 202, who do not live in Skevinston. That came to us initially as a referral, because 60203 is actually Evanston, Illinois, still, when you look at the address. We also want to understand that Rogers Park, if we have students who are unhoused, they may not live in any of those zip codes. So we want to make sure that we just say students who attend and their families, District 65 and 202. And are there numbers? There were some numbers that you also had.
Yeah, so I did, I did speak with District 202 ETS after the last city council meeting, and there's 201 students who reside outside 60201 or 60202, in addition to the 745 District 65 students. 745 District 65 students live outside Evanston, 201 ETS students. Close to, yes. If they get passed, correct. If they get passed, that is correct.
Councilmember Kelly, you still have the floor, do you?
No, I think Director Tom said, answer my question. I had just understood that the only expectation for NU students was just their ID, and then I wanted to, but you've assured me now that a Northwestern student is expected to get a token, just like any Evanston resident.
You didn't mishear. That's exactly what I said. I was incorrect. So when I said it at the last council meeting, I actually said, you just show a Northwestern ID and get on. So you didn't mishear that. I was incorrect in that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Harris.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I support the way you're, you're thinking about this. I just learned that even at Chute, it is, that they'll accept some people who live in Chicago in Rogers Park, which I did not know that. I think I was aware of that for 202, but not in, not in D65. And then I think that just whatever is easiest for, what's the role again, the title of the people checking the, what is it?
Gate attendants.
Gate attendants. Whatever is easiest for them, I think, is what we need to go with. I can see a token being a lot easier to just scan, you got it, go ahead, than having to like card somebody and make sure it's the right person. That could take even more time. I will say, you know, to some extent, to Councilmember Reed's point, I think this is a very exhausting thing for our gate attendants to do. I don't think it's happening all the time. Not trying to narc on them, but I don't think it's happening all the time, because it's, it's a lot. Especially on, you know, hot days, there's a lot of people going in and out of the beach to have to like verify every single person. I think honestly is unrealistic. But the fact that people feel like they need this token in advance, I think is what makes it worthwhile, because whether we're checking or not, people are paying. And, and there's a benefit to that. But, and that's all. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So now I'm stressed out, because I think I heard 745 students in District 65 and 201 and ETS. And we said their families as well. So that number can increase out this world.
Provided they all get a beach pass, correct. So if it was just the students who obtain a beach pass, just the students, not family members, we were looking at maybe, maybe $41,000 in potential lost revenue, again, if they received a beach pass, if they purchased.
Not everybody goes to the beach.
Right, right. It's just hard to predict, because we don't, we don't track it in our registration software, which is something that we will be doing this upcoming year with the District 65 students, 202, and NU students as well, so we can give you more accurate data next year.
That's a big number. That has the potential to be a big number, household of three, household of five. That has the potential to be a big number, household of three, household of five. Okay, I, okay, thank you.
Will the clerk please?
They'll still, just point of, am I out of town?
Yeah.
Okay. They'll still have to pay for parking. So we may even make more money because they'll, they may not have come in the past.
For some reason, someone else wants to speak. Councilmember Brad, guys.
Yeah, I, I will just, uh, Councilmember Harris, I, it's my personal feeling, like a lot of these folks just don't go to the beach. So, you know, we're, there is potential loss, but I really feel like most people just opt out of, out of going, or they, or their children go with their friends and they, they pay for the one, one child ago.
And I would
Or their children go to their friends and they don't pay because
We never
There's just a lot of tokens floating around Evanston now that they're free.
I just wanted to say for the record though, because dollars make sense. So I just wanted us to look at those numbers.
Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Nope.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffolk?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddadis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the new policy is adopted. Councilmember Revelle on item PD1, do you want to, uh, request suspension of the rules?
This one? PD1?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, I request suspension of the rules, uh, for us to adopt ordinance 76 dash zero dash 24, amending ordinance 48 dash zero dash 23. Section three, uh, condition 16, screening for mechanical equipment.
Second.
Councilmember Revelle moves suspension of the rules so that ordinance 76 dash O dash 24 can be introduced and acted upon this evening. Councilmember Reed, second. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Can we do voice votes sometimes?
I don't like them.
Okay.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffolk?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddadis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Uh, with nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion receives the required unanimous support and the rules are suspended. Now, Councilmember Revelle, do you have a new motion to make?
I guess I move adoption of ordinance 76 dash zero dash 24, amending ordinance 48 dash zero dash 23. Section three, condition 16, screening for mechanical equipment.
Second.
Councilmember Revelle moves, uh, final passage of ordinance 76 dash O dash 24. Councilmember Reed, second. Is there any discussion?
Oh, just
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, if just staff can say why this, why didn't this go through the normal course of action?
Sarah Flax, Community of Illinois Director, um, the school district is working very hard to get this project underway. Um, in this case, they have found that the mechanicals that are gonna be on the, um, roof of the building won't be visible based on where they'll be placed. And they also are, uh, there, people are saying that it would, the noise will not exceed the sound, uh, uh, noise levels. And also they, um, want to put solar on, and so part of this is to make it easier to put the solar on. Um, if by any chance, when it's constructed, there is too much noise or it's visible, then they'll have to screen it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, I'm sorry, that, but that still didn't really answer my question. Why is staff specifically requesting suspension of the rules? Why couldn't this have just?
Just for the timeframe, they're really trying to get going. We do not, in this case, do their permitting and things like that. That's one of the weird things.
You go ahead.
Sorry, Liz Williams, um, the reason why they're asking for suspension of the rules is because they're trying to get their bid package out to stay on schedule with their construction timeline. So they wanna issue their bid before you meet next time to take action on this, so that's part of the rationale for requesting intro and action, so they can stay on their current construction timeline.
Okay, thank you.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffolk?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddadis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 76 dash O dash 24 is, uh, introduced and acted upon past, uh, um, this evening. Um, now, Councilmember Suffolk, and I think you have a motion on the CCs.
Um, yes, thank
Move them all as a package?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, uh, we could do these all as a package because it's the same amendment each time. Uh, I've emailed it to all of you. It was suggested, and I think it makes sense, rather than have the dollar amount in, uh, what would be the compensation if one were to opt out of the health insurance, we would just say that it is, uh, equivalent to the same incentive that is in the employee handbook. So, uh, we can make a motion as it relates to all three at once, or we could do them one by one, because it's a pleasure to be here with you all. You tell me what makes sense.
I think all at once is fine, Councilmember.
Uh, so I move that we amend item CC1, CC2, and CC3, uh, with the language that's in the amendment that I had emailed to everyone, uh, replacing the dollar amount, $208.33, with the words equivalent to the same incentive amount offered to city employees as referenced in the employee handbook.
I think you, I think you need to actually move the thing itself and then we can do an amendment.
All right, then I move items CC1, CC2, and CC3.
Second.
Councilmember Suffolk moves passage of ordinance 71 dash O dash 24, 72 dash O dash 24, and 73 dash O dash 24, I believe Councilmember Revelle seconded, is that correct? Uh, now, Councilmember Suffolk, and you have an amendment?
Uh, yes. As you may have heard, the amendment is to, uh, remove the dollar amount of $208.33 and replace it with the words equivalent to the same incentive amount offered to city employees as referenced in the employee handbook.
Second.
Councilmember Suffolk moves to amend all three ordinances as just described. Councilmember Revelle, second. Is there any discussion, Councilmember Reed?
Yeah.
Councilmember Reed?
Um, my one concern with this is that, um, my understanding of the Illinois constitution and our law is that a council member's compensation cannot be changed during a term. And the handbook is something that, I mean, one, that the council doesn't even approve, that the city manager just can essentially, through his authority, change at any time. and so it seems as though having a fixed dollar amount in the code makes clear what the compensation would be. So it, the, the compensation can't be adjusted during the term, which would be a violation of the Illinois constitution and state and, and case law. So I, while I appreciate the clarity, the Councilmember Suffolk in speaking, I think it actually puts us in a less clear place and potentially sets us up, um, for a violation.
Ms. Rag, do you want to weigh in on that?
Certainly. So we looked into this, um, I had similar qualms as Councilmember Reed. Um, I, I do think because we are specifying the stipend and council doesn't take action to increase or decrease it, um, it's likely, um, a perfectly fine amendment, but I, I do think what Councilmember Reed is saying makes sense. Um, so it would just be if it was challenged, then we would find out. Um, I, I think earlier today, we looked into the amounts that are reimbursed. So currently, the amount that is in this ordinance matches what our CBAs are with our union employees. Um, that's set to stay the same until the end of 2026. Um, but in the end of 2026, which is the beginning of the next term of council, it will be renegotiated. So there is a situation where that amount for city employees could increase where it doesn't for the council members. So, um, that, that was the consideration by matching it to what, uh, the city employees get.
I don't know, do I still have the floor? Yeah, I, I would even, sorry, Councilmember Suffolk, but I would encourage us to just leave the language as is, because it avoids, um, potential litigation. Someone is upset with the council, someone's sour that they lost, or whatever the heck may happen. Um, and I think this just leaves us open for either confusion because the contract changes down the line, or, um, you know, potential unnecessary litigation. So I would encourage a no vote.
I think, uh, first, Mr. Stowe.
I was just gonna add briefly, I guess, uh, our thought process is, this is not compensation in the traditional sense, this is like a stipend, uh, like, for example, the, uh, contribution towards health insurance, like that, those amounts could change, or like, I believe all council members also receive a cell phone stipend, and theoretically, that could change next year or the year after, so that also could shift. It's not compensation as in the base compensation.
But just, I mean, a cell phone stipend is different than health insurance. Health insurance certainly is a part of compensation. That's kind of any job that you get, they, that's part of the compensation package. A cell phone stipend is just to cover equipment that's being used for the city, for the people. Health insurance is not that.
Uh, Councilmember Newsma, followed by Suffolk.
Uh, so how often is the employee handbook updated? And maybe you answered this question already, and who updates that? Who has the authority to make that change?
So, uh, this is, it's, this particular item is a city manager discretion item, um, and we do update the handbook on a regular basis. So, uh, it may stay the same for the next few years, it may change next year.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Suffolk.
Uh, yeah, I, I appreciate that concern, but, um, the objective is to put city council members in the same position as city employees. The cost of insurance fluctuates, the plans that people may choose fluctuates. Um, rather than have this as a fixed dollar amount, this would just put it, every council member in the same position as every other city employee. And I've, you think that the risk of litigation is so high that it's not worth doing, then, uh, vote no.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll? And again, this is the, the vote on the amendment, uh, that's been under discussion for the last few minutes.
Been right on legal issues before.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffolk?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Haddadis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Another nine, one.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the ordinances are all amended. Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll now on the now amended ordinances 71, 72, and 73 dash O dash 24?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffolk?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Haddadis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and ordinances 71 dash O dash 24, 72 dash O dash 24, and 73 dash O dash 24 are all adopted. This brings us to the call of the wards. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Um, so a number of events took place that I wanted to just bring recognition to. In the fifth ward, um, on October 31st, we had praise in the park and that went really well. Um, also in the fifth ward, just the Sunday, Church Street, Church and, um, church and Dodge did a back-to-school program, so I wanted to commend, um, Gigi, she usually pulls it together, it's a good time. Um, as you saw this morning, we had the ETHS Construction and Geometry, the house at 1316 McDaniel, please stop by, that is our first second ward, um, high school house, the Centennial. We attended Kit Kat and Kids and had a really good time this past Friday. Was that Friday? Thursday? No one knows. Okay, the fifth. Um, we actually had an EPD retirement, Heidi, I wish her well, she has done a great job and, um, has been a great support for our, um, Special Olympics. Um, Bobby put on, uh, Councilmember Burns put on a really good housing reparations program, so congratulations on that. And we had the Hall of Fame at ETHS where, um, my godbrother, Damon Jones, was nominated into the Hall of Fame, and I thought that was pretty cool. We will have a West Village Jamboree, um, uh, the 29th, from 12 to 4, in the, um, Hartwood Parking Lot, so I encourage everybody to stop by. And that's it for now.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No report.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there's a lot going on this Saturday, uh, with the Preston's Flowers thing and the ETHS celebrations, so somewhere in there, uh, fourth ward residents and others are welcome to come out. Berry Pike Cafe on Oak Street. Uh, and then looking ahead, the October ward meeting is not going to be October 1st, uh, which it normally would be because that is the evening of Evanston Mashup. Uh, it is also not going to be, uh, on October 8th, which is what I had previously said, but I screwed that up, and I have something else going on on October 8th. So October ward meeting will happen, I'm just not sure when. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Um, Councilmember Harris mentioned it, but I just want to make sure that, um, I extend, uh, acknowledgement to all those that were a part of, uh, planning the Housing Expo. So we have the Reparations Committee, of course. Um, a while ago, we split up into, to, uh, three different, at least three different working groups. I co-chair the Housing Working Group with Bonnie Lockhart, uh, who was also on the Reparations Committee. And, uh, our first initiative as a working group was to, uh, organize this Housing Expo that was this, this past weekend, it was very successful, probably about 80, uh, participants attended. We had various, uh, housing, uh, vendors, um, with, with tables in a, in an expo kind of format. Uh, and then we also, uh, split up into different, uh, breakout, we had different breakout sessions as well. Um, we had home upkeep, home maintenance and renovation strategies, we had, uh, how to, uh, kind of, you know, develop, um, wills and trusts, so we had an attorney lead people through that. Uh, we had, uh, somebody there from Merrill Lynch and Bank of America to talk about, uh, financial planning and investment strategies. Um, we had, uh, Vanessa Johnson McCoy there to talk about the ABCs, the home buying, so it was a, a very successful event. There's probably about seven or eight of us that are part of the working group, and, and I mentioned this during the event, that, um, you know, you remember in high school where the, you know, teacher would assign a couple of students to a class project and only one or two participate? Uh, that was not this. Everybody was running the same direction, everyone, um, really, uh, held their own in, in terms of carrying out the, the task that they were assigned. It was a, a joy to organize this event with, uh, my fellow, uh, community members and, and Housing Working Group members, and, uh, look out for, uh, future events. Thank you.
Councilmember Suffolk.
Ward meeting, uh, on the 19th, about to envision Evanston.
Councilmember Revelle.
Uh, and that's gonna be a joint sixth and seventh ward meeting, uh, 6:00 PM on Thursday the 19th, um, an opportunity for residents to come discuss the big ideas that are coming out of Envision Evanston, so encourage lots of attendance.
Councilmember Reed?
Uh, ward meeting on September 26th at the Levy Senior Center, um, at 6:00 PM. Um, I believe our guest will be, uh, Public Works, uh, folks from the Public Works Department. Um, I also just want to add one quick thing on the budget. Um, I'm, I'm really curious, when, at Finance and Budget, uh, we heard that there's an 8% and tonight we heard there's an 8% vacancy rate. Um, it was shared that a decent portion of that was from our police department, and from everything I understand, we've made great strides with filling roles in our police department. So I would just love an update for both the council, the community, where we are with filling vacancies in the police department, um, and, and maybe if, at a future meeting when we discuss budget, if we can get a more concise breakdown of where those vacancies are occurring, uh, that'd be helpful. But I, I do want to assure people, from my understanding, that our police department is up and running pretty well. From the police department retirements, or are we saying retirements just overall? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Haddadis?
Sure, so, um, ninth ward meeting, um, on September 30th at, um, the South End Community Center at, in the café, from 7 to 8:30 PM. Uh, we'll have both of our new deputy city managers there. Um, just want to let people know about the Out of Darkness Chicagoland Walk, um, put on by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, I will be
I will be there this Saturday, 9:14 at Montrose Harbor. It's an important event. And then I just also want to give a plug for Evanston Folk Fest. It was lovely. I like that a bunch of folks were referring to it as the inaugural Folk Fest. So I really hope we can make that happen again.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. Yes, hats off to Space, to Jake Samuels and his team for really creating an incredibly well-organized, fun, memorable event. That was amazing, just really top-notch. NU City Committee meeting this Wednesday at 5 o'clock. So if you are a neighbor of Northwestern University and want to come to share thoughts, concerns, please come at 5 o'clock this Wednesday in the chambers. Thank you.
And seeing nothing further on our agenda, the September 9th meeting of the Evanston City Council stands adjourned. Night, everybody.